I'd like everyone to rise, please, for the invocation given by Pastor Joel Garza from the Bridge Church in Robstown. And then if you will continue standing for the pledges, thank you.
This is Bow heads. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you, Lord. We thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings. Lord, your word says that every good gift and every perfect gift comes from above, from the Father of light. So we thank you and we praise you for it. I pray for this Commissioners' Court today, Lord. I pray for wisdom and understanding. I pray, Lord, that the voices would be heard. I pray, Lord, that issues, Lord, would be addressed in the best possible way. I pray that you give guidance throughout this court and that you allow and provide your wisdom for decision-making. Father, we thank you. I pray for each and every person in this courtroom and everything that pertains to them, Lord, that you would bless them. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I will submit that all Commissioners are present. We have a quorum. It is Wednesday, February 21st at 9:10, and we are at 901 Leopard Street. So I call this meeting to order. I, um, I'm sorry. Moving on to item D, announcement on disclosure of conflicts of interest. If any Commissioner has a conflict, you can state so now or when the item comes up. You could also bring it up then. Do we have any conflicts? Moving forward then, present the following certificates of recognition. Item E1, Peyton is going to come up and read. We have already voted on this one back in September. Do we have them here? Are they present outside? Let's bring them in, please. Yes. And apparently somehow the miscommunication, they didn't get the message that we were doing the resolution, so we didn't get to honor them. So we brought them back today for this. We're just, thank you for being here as well. Peyton, if you will read the resolution that's already been voted on, please.
Whereas, the Nuasis County Commissioners' Court is proud to honor the Texas 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service for 115 years of providing experience-based education to youth throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas, this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for all youth through their head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas, the program's more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants, ranging in age from eight to 18, come from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas, the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 30,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas, throughout its proud history, the 4H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans throughout its innovative and inspiring programs and continues to build character and instill the values that have made our state strong. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County does hereby designate October 1st through 7th, 2023, as National 4H Week in Nuasis County and commends the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success. Duly adopted by the vote of Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County, Texas, on this 27th day of September, 2023.
So we did not forget. We didn't pass it. We just miscommunicated. Do you want to say some words, please? Yes.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for letting us come back and acknowledging and recognizing our program. So for over 80 years, the 4H program has served the youth of Nuasis County. In that time, not only has the program grown in size, but also the projects available. We are no longer the corn club, beef calf clubs, pig clubs, and tomato clubs of the early 1900s, although those were important and played a huge part in who we have become. Today, the 4H program provides activities and educational opportunities in five project areas: agriculture and livestock, family and community health, leadership and citizenship, natural resources, and STEM. If you like cooking, we have a project for you. If healthy living interests you, we have a project for you. If robotics is your thing, we have a project for you. If you have an interest in fashion or photography, we have a project for you. 4H is the largest youth development organization in the nation, serving youth in rural, urban, and suburban communities and reaching over 550,000 youth annually. This past year, Nuasis County enrolled over 700 youth in 25 clubs and reached over 10,000 youth through school enrichment programs, with 314 adults and youth volunteers providing educational experiences. Each year, we are excited for the potential our county program has in shaping our leaders of tomorrow. I want to thank you, Judge, and Commissioners, for your continued support of our county 4H program. We appreciate that you see the value in what our youth are accomplishing. I want to ask Malia Loa to briefly share some of her experiences over the last year.
Hi, good morning. My name is Malia Loa, and I've been doing 4H for 10 years now. I want to start off by once again saying thank you so much for y'all's endless support of this great program. I know that me and these guys have worked extremely hard through our experience in 4H, and this past year has been a rough one, as we did lose one of our members, J.J. Falcone, to his battle to cancer. That was really hard, and you guys were there for us, supported us, and allowed us to keep going and keep this program a super-strong one. I know personally that this program has set me on the right path for my future, and as a senior in high school, I feel prepared and ready to enter the college world, and I cannot wait to use the skills that I've learned to continue my journey and hopefully make the best better. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. If we could have you all come to the front, we'd like to do a photo with this resolution.
Thank you.
It worked.
It worked.
It worked.
At least today, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was hoping we'd get the cookies.
We would not forget the cookies.
Look forward to the cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This will come in handy about 10:30.
Thank you.
I have an extra one here, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Close the next one up, and then the one after that.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F1, adopt the following resolutions, and Priscilla is going to read this, in recognition of 2024 Nuasis County Junior Livestock Show Queen's Contest. I think they're coming in. You might give them a second to enter. If I would accept a motion and a second to...
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And Priscilla, if you will read it.
Ma'am. Nuasis County Junior Livestock Show Queen Contest, contestants. Whereas, the first Nuasis County Junior Livestock Show took place in 1936 with 14 boys involved in the Nuasis County 4H Beef Club, and the first Queen Contest was in 1963. Whereas, the mission of the NCJLS is to promote responsibility and leadership skills through the educational work of 4H Clubs, FCCLA, and FFH chapters, in cooperation with the adult leaders of Nuasis County and all phases of agriculture, homemaking, and industry. Whereas, the NCJLS has grown from its early days from showing steers to now include a rabbit division, poultry division, horse show, homemaking and arts and crafts, ag mechanics, and handicrafts, market goats, breeding sheep, welding contests, and a queens contest. Whereas, contests and queens contests are representatives in good standing with a 4H Club and FFH or FCCLA chapter must present a talent, and the top five finalists participate in an interview. Whereas, the 2024 NCJLS Queen Contest, contestants are Kylie Zimmerman, queen and best westernwear, Emma Campbell, first runner-up, Bailey Nobles, second runner-up and Miss Congeniality, Leighton Lahom, third runner-up and Miss Top Talent, Hannah Wright, fourth runner-up and Top Interview, and Kaylee Cargile, Best Evening Gown. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County does hereby congratulate and recognizes the Nuasis County Junior Livestock Show Queen Contest, contestants, and further encourage the citizens of Nuasis County to join in the recognition, wishing them the best of luck in their future endeavors. Duly adopted by vote of the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County, Texas, on the first, actually, the 21st day of February, 2024.
We have a typo, yes. Oh, it's 21st, yes. Thank you all for being here. Do you have someone that is going to speak as well? Yes. The queen is going to speak.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to thank all of y'all for having...
Can you move the microphone up?
Sorry.
Yes, thank you. You're a little taller than the last person.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to thank all of y'all for having us here today. We appreciate your support in the sale and throughout the livestock show. I just really want to thank y'all for having all of us beautiful ladies here this morning, and we're just so happy that y'all recognized us this morning.
We are happy to do so. Thank you very much. And we would like to get a photo with you ladies as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to speak also, or yes?
I just want to reiterate what Kylie said. We do appreciate your support, and we appreciate you allowing us to come in today. We had 20 contestants, but they're the cream of the crop in our county, and so they are either at the San Antonio Livestock Show, they're taking advanced placement classes or dual-credit classes, and couldn't miss school today. So we do appreciate all that y'all do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
That crown is tall.
Very pretty, yeah.
One, two, three.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Did you get to miss school today?
We can make you stay lighter if you need to.
Get a little day pass.
That's right. That's true.
We have one more. Item number two, recognizing the Tuloso Midway Business Professionals of America team. Are they outside or are they coming in as well? I would go ahead and accept a motion and a second to...
So move.
We have a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposing, same sign. The motion passes, and Ms. Deanna King is going to read that one.
Commissioners' Court Resolution, recognizing the Tuloso Midway Business Professionals of America team. Whereas, the Tuloso Midway Business Professionals of America Regional State Qualifiers will be competing on February 28th through March 2nd, 2024, in Corpus Christi, Texas, in hopes of advancing to the Business Professionals of America National Competition in Chicago, Illinois. Whereas, the Tuloso Midway Business Professionals of America Regional Team consists of Maria Andrade, Daniel Guzman, Daniel Romero, Emily Gwen, Martin Williams, Isabel Cantu, Kamala Camacho, Alazar Silva, Cohen Janisch, Anthony Reyes, John Cooper, Annabelle Yannick, Demary Stafford, Kayo Torres, Josiah Corillo, Catherine Cabarri... I have a hard time on this one. Cabarrios, Padegue, Rolando Adias, Elisa Spali, and Jody Perez. Now therefore be it resolved by Nuasis County Commissioners' Court that the Court hereby recognizes the Tuloso Midway Business Professionals of America team for their hard work, and we wish them good luck at the 2024 Regional State Business Professionals of America competition, duly adopted by the vote of Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County, Texas, on this 21st day of February, 2024.
Thank you very much. And it looks like you have some people that are going to speak as well. Please.
I'm the Secretary for Tulosa Midway's Business Professionals of America program. I want to start by first giving a special thanks to Commissioner Hernandez of the First Precinct and everybody at the Nuasis County Commissioners' Court for having us here, and I really appreciate it. So Tulosa Midway's BPA program is only a few years old. We're a recent program at TM, but despite that, we've had a lot of success, and we've grown the program multiple times over just in the last few years. BPA is a program that gives students the opportunity to learn about businesses, how businesses operate, how to operate, control, and manage businesses and the different parts of them, and it gives a lot of really great opportunities. And I think that's really exemplified by the variety of events within BPA. It's almost like a nerd version of track, where there's a bunch of different events that everybody can specialize in, and it takes a lot of different people to have a really successful team, which I think we have here today, which is why we're sending a lot of people to BPA State in the next couple of weeks, which will be hosted here in Nuasis County. And overall, I think we've had a very successful program that continues to get larger, improve, be more and more successful, and we really appreciate your continued support of our program and of the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, and we wish you all the best of luck. Yes, and we have something for you as well. If y'all would like to come up and get a photo to...
Judge?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I appreciate this group. I wish that I had a group like this when I was in high school, but y'all are great role models for the rest of the younger generation that's coming behind you. So thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for what y'all do.
Would y'all like to come forward, or do you have anyone else wishing to speak? Did you want to speak about your team? Yeah, thank you.
Would y'all like to come forward, or do you have anyone else wishing to speak? Did you want to speak about your team? Yeah, thank you.
You got the window, right?
There you go. Now we're talking.
It's okay. I think it worked.
Who said that?
One, two, three, what? What did you say?
Who said that?
I don't know. Who did that? Who said that?
It's me.
Okay, good.
Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
We need a couple more guys, I promise.
Everybody get in line.
Thank you. Bring back the trophy, man.
Congratulations, guys.
Worked out, worked.
No bunny ears.
Thank you.
We have a couple of things I'm going to do before we move to public comment.
Are there any items that any Commissioner wishes to table? I need to table item 3A13. That is the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development...
The abatement?
The abatement?
No, it's on the regular. The abatement policy, it needs to be tabled to 320.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Are there any other ones that need to be tabled? Any Commissioners? Then the other thing I was asked, and I think we should discuss this before moving up, item 3A14 is to discuss and consider amending the Commissioners' Court Policy and Procedure Guidelines. And I believe Commissioner Chesney brought this up, but...
Yes, ma'am. What's the number on it? I'm sorry.
3A14.
Judge, this is simply a policy... I'm sorry, let me get to it. I apologize.
Yeah.
To allow... Public comment sometimes turns into come up and say things that aren't accurate or just to attack members of a governing body, and I don't think that's what it's supposed to be. But we're constantly told that the rules say when someone comes up and makes an inaccurate statement, or attacks, or makes a factual inquiry, that we can't respond, and this provides the opportunity for us to have a limited response. I did get with the county attorney to help me draft this in a way that she felt was legally sufficient, and I'll let her weigh in on that, so I don't speak for her, but I didn't want the court to know that I didn't write it. I actually asked the county attorney to write it, and that's what this is all about. And it's in the background.
Basically, in the background, the stance would be if a person appears before the court during public comment and makes remarks at conclusion of... If a person...
If conclusion...
At conclusion of their... If a person remarks, the court should be allowed to respond with an equal amount of time in public comment to make, number one, and I think that's part of the rules already, with a statement of fact. We can already do that on any... I think we haven't done that as much, but we can clarify a statement of fact. And number two, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. If we have a policy that is already in place that doesn't allow that comment to be stated, is that what you're saying on that one? Yes?
Basically, Judge, yeah. It's just if someone comes in and makes an inquiry or comment about a policy or anything like that, or any kind of inquiry or comment, or makes a statement that isn't factual, or is attacking in nature, if you will, that allows the court not to engage in dialogue, but to have the same...
Yeah, to be clear, it states on here, any deliberation of or discussion about the subject of the inquiry is limited to just saying that we will put it on a subsequent agenda to discuss at a future time, because we aren't changing basically the rules of that other than...
Just a little tweak that allows... Because what Ginny always tells us is...
You can't state that.
You can't say anything. So if someone comes up and says something that's factually incorrect, or says something about anybody on the court, or the county attorney, or whatever, we can't respond. This allows us now to be able to clarify the record in an equal amount of time that they were given for public comment. So if someone comes up and says, you know, something terrible about our county attorney, if the county attorney wants to take that three minutes to respond in a factual statement, she doesn't have to, but it allows that opportunity, and that's what the impetus for me on this was, and this is what Ginny wrote it, that she thought was legally sufficient. Is that...
Yes, ma'am, and it tracks the statute with only the added... What we added was that the response from the member of the court should be after the conclusion of the statements by the member of the public, so that there doesn't begin to be a deliberation between the member of the public and the court.
Correct.
Yes, once they finish, then you would have...
I should understand that, I mean, forever, man, we sit here, you know, that's part of politics, I guess. I don't know what you mean by attack, you know, and people that... I mean, I could say I was attacked by 14 doctors at one time, you know? You know, if you want to call it that, but then because they're all shot, threw rocks at me, but, you know, but, you know, I understand. I mean, I don't know what you mean by attack, or...
It just gives you the opportunity to respond if you want to.
Well, but I mean, I don't think we should be respond to every single thing that somebody talks about one Commissioner. I mean, I mean, that's what you got in... I'm just politics, man. You got King, he get out of the kitchen, but...
But I don't...
You know, the thing, what I'm saying here is, you know, put it in the agenda, if you want to talk about it, or if it's an agenda item, talk about it in the agenda item, you know? But I just, you know, for us to be changing policies every time somebody does something that, and it hurts their feelings, you know, we'd be changing policies forever, you know? And I don't think that for us to keep saying three minutes, these, now we're going to take another 18 minutes, 20 minutes, the Commissioners' Court for us to respond, because if they say Commissioners' Court, that means all of us. So we all have a right to respond, I guess what you're saying. So, I mean, if they direct it at one Commissioner, well, you can tell whether it's an attack or whether it's a fact, or where, you know, I just think that we're taking this too loose to try to change policies every time we don't like something, you know, and that's not the way it's supposed to be.
It is the way it's supposed to be, Commissioner.
No, it's not supposed to be.
Yeah, it is. If you don't like something that you think is unjust, you ought to have the right to change it.
The thing is, the policy we have is a good policy, nothing wrong with it. I mean, you know, I mean, somebody vulgar, somebody... Besides the...
But we're constantly told that the rules say when someone comes up and makes an inaccurate statement, or attacks, or makes a factual inquiry, that we can't respond. And this provides the opportunity for us to have a limited response. I did get with the county attorney to help me draft this in a way that she felt was legally sufficient. And I'll let her weigh in on that, so I don't speak for her. But I didn't want the court to know that I didn't write it. I actually asked the county attorney to write it. And that's what this is all about.
Um...
And it's in the... It's in the background.
Basically, in the background, the stance would be if a person appears before the court during public comment and makes remarks at conclusion of... If a person...
At conclusion of their...
If a person remarks, the court should be allowed to respond with an equal amount of time in public comment to make, number one. And I think that's part of the rules already with a statement of fact. We can already do that on any... I think we haven't done that as much, but we can clarify a statement of fact. And number two, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. If we have a policy that is already in place that doesn't allow that comment to be stated, is that what you're saying on that one? Yes?
Basically, Judge, yeah. It's just if someone comes in and makes an inquiry or comment about a policy, or anything like that, or any kind of inquiry or comment, or makes a statement that isn't factual, or is attacking in nature, if you will, that allows the court not to engage in dialogue, but to have the same...
Yeah, to be clear, it states on here, any deliberation of or discussion about the subject of the inquiry is limited to just saying that we will put it on a subsequent agenda to discuss at a future time. Because we aren't changing, basically, the rules of that, other than...
Just a little tweak that allows... Because what Ginny always tells us is...
You can't state that.
You can't say anything. So if someone comes up and says something that's factually incorrect, or says something about anybody on the court, or the county attorney, or whatever, we can't respond. This allows us now to be able to clarify the record in an equal amount of time that they were given for public comment. So if someone comes up and says, you know, something terrible about our county attorney, if the county attorney wants to take that three minutes to respond in a factual statement, she doesn't have to, but it allows that opportunity. And that's what the impetus for me on this was. And this is what Ginny wrote it, that she thought was legally sufficient. Is that...
Yes, ma'am. And it tracks the statute with only the added... What we added was that the response from the member of the court should be after the conclusion of the statements by the member of the public, so that there doesn't begin to be a deliberation between the member of the public and the court.
Correct.
Yes, once they finish, then you would have...
I should understand that, I mean, forever, man, we sit here, you know, that's part of politics, I guess. I don't know what you mean by attack, you know? And people that... I mean, I could say I was attacked by 14 doctors at one time, you know? You know, if you want to call it that, but then because they're all shot through rocks at me. But, you know, but, you know, I understand. I mean, I don't know what you mean by attack, or...
It just gives you the opportunity to respond if you want to.
Well, but I mean, I don't think we should be responding to every single thing that somebody talks about one commissioner. I mean, I mean, that's what you got in... I'm just politics, man. You can't take the heat, get out of the kitchen.
But I don't...
You know, the thing... What I'm saying here is, you know, put it in the agenda, go and talk about it, or if it's an agenda item, talk about it in the agenda item, you know? But I just, you know, for us to be changing policies every time somebody does something and it hurts their feelings, you know, we'd be changing policies forever, you know? And I don't think that for us to keep saying three minutes each, now we're going to take another 18 minutes, 20 minutes, the Commissioners' Court for us to respond. Because if they say Commissioners' Court, that means all of us. So we all have a right to respond, I guess what you're saying. So, I mean, if they directly at one commissioner, well, you can tell whether it's an attack, or whether it's a fact, or where, you know, I just think that we're taking this too loose to try to change policies every time we don't like something, you know? And that's not the way it's supposed to be.
It is the way it's supposed to be, Commissioner.
No, it's not supposed to be.
Yeah, it is. If you don't like something that you think is unjust, you ought to have the right to change it.
The thing is, the policy we have is a good policy, nothing wrong with it. I mean, you know, I mean, somebody vulgar, somebody... Besides, we have a policy that can't do that, right?
And I agree with you, Commissioner. We don't need to change too much. But I think that more of what I assume this was for is not... You know, we all got elected. We make decisions and people get mad, and they come in here and they say things about us. I think when it's your opponent in an election that changes the dynamics. It is where someone else has an opportunity to say things that possibly aren't true, or are true, or... I think that's when, for me, it would be an opportunity that you would be allowed to speak. We... Candidates in elections are nasty. People can use those as soundbites. To me, that would be if an opponent does... If you're on the ballot against someone, you should be allowed to speak. And that's what I think.
It's in the statute, regardless of the policies. And the policies I know before addressed this specific item, but this is 551. So it's nothing that is...
It's just articulating what's available now anyway. So this isn't... That's what I was trying to say, it's not a change.
So we don't need to stop everybody from speaking.
But when we change policy, or when we do things differently, we're supposed to put it on and let people know we're going to do things differently. And so this is all this is. This follows the statute. Because as I've done some research on this, and Ginny and I have talked about it, we think there's always been this opportunity to do it. But we just looked at the statute differently. And now because the statute is interpreted differently, meaning we can already do it, we're just letting the public know, because it's a change of what we did. That's all this is, is just letting the public know that this... We're changing the way we're operating, which is what our obligation is if we change our common practice. And even though this has always been allowed, we've just...
Because we have historically...
So it's the law. So I mean, what... I mean, I don't even know that we have to vote on it.
It doesn't sound like it's a vote.
Because I'm going to do it if I choose to do it. Because now I found out the law is not what I thought it was in public comment, with public comment, so...
But you have to remember also that the opponent, it's a citizen of this community, and they have a right to come here and say what they want to say. As long as they're in attack, you know, they have a right to say what they want to say. That's... I mean, because they're opponents, doesn't mean they can't come to public comment and express their opinions and their feelings.
Agreed.
As long as they stay within the facts, I don't see nothing wrong with it.
And we have a right to respond.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, if there's a fact there, I mean, you know, there's a line you can't cross, we know that, you know, the line where you...
So...
vulgar land...
Yeah, but who's the arbiter of the line? Like, who's...
I think that would be Ginny.
Yeah. Well, no, it's just... But the point is, all this is is if someone comes forward and says something that's inaccurate, and that person wants to respond, then they get to, because it's the law. The law says we can't.
How do we know it's inaccurate? You know what I'm saying? I mean, now we're saying... We all up here know that it's inaccurate what he's... How do we know? How do you know? You know, the only one knows is probably the person himself, you know, and...
But he's the only one going to be responding. If the attack is against you, and you know it to be not true, you have an opportunity to state a fact.
And if you don't want to respond, don't respond.
That's the way the law already reads. So we're just letting the public know that in the past, we have kept our mouths shut. In the past, everyone has addressed this. We've all said you can't speak in public comment. No, we don't normally address things. But we can, by law, if something is inaccurate, or we can address if it's a big enough concern to let you know that we will bring it back to a subsequent meeting for further discussion. We can say those kind of things.
But we don't have to change policy.
So in the future, there is no policy change necessary. This is already written in law. So we're just going to maybe do that. Where before, we've stopped each other and said, you can't talk, you can't talk. It's public comment, you have to give, you know... We can correct misinformation, and we can say we are going... It is an issue, and we're going to bring that back to court at another time.
And that's all I'm trying to do. I didn't want to catch anybody off guard. I'm trying to bring it to the court.
Yes.
Because that's what we're supposed to do when we're going to operate differently, because the law says we can. So I don't know, Ginny, if we need to put it on the... Like, you've made us put in the past, when we change how we do things, a little line on the agenda that says we can now do this, so that people know we can do it. That's all this was, was so that the court knows we have the ability now to do what we have thought all along we didn't.
So what I'm hearing now, Commissioners, is whoever has the last word is correct.
It would have to be fact, if you're going to speak out.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So who's going to tell us that it's fact and what it's not?
I mean, I could tell you what I feel.
I think...
You don't have to talk. You don't have to say anything. No, I'm saying...
I mean, the person running for office here could say whatever he wants to say. How do we know that's the fact?
What does it matter? It's public comment.
I think...
Well, that's what it is when a person comes up to the podium and states, makes a statement. It's a public comment.
Right. Well, I think there's a difference between public comment and even to the point where you're slander. I mean, you can't go up and say you're a murderer to somebody and make a statement like that. I mean, I think there has to be something within reason. If it's political, it's fine. All this is clarifying is that what the tool is already available to the judge mainly, to gavel down. And I think there's an expectation of decorum that we have when you come before the court. Be critical. That's what we've signed up for. That's what some of us have signed up for for this year. That's fine. But when statements are being made that are misleading, inaccurate, or outright slanderous, there should be an opportunity to at least respond. And it's already there. It's in statute. There's nothing that's being created today. In fact, I don't think we...
We don't need a vote. We don't need anything to vote on it.
Just making everyone aware of it. Just, I think in general, just, we, you know, we have to expect people to come in here with their decorum. We're going to give them respect. I mean, this previous court talked about respect and having respect for the previous court. And that was all fine and good until people come in and give disrespect. And then they turn away and ignore it. If we want respect from the court to the public, and vice versa, then it should just be respectful and have that sense of decorum all around. So just be aware that there's a statute, there's already steps in place, that the court, or really anyone that's addressing, that's within the court officers, can come back and respond to this. That's all this is saying.
Okay. Moving on then, I think we have addressed that. We will move on to public comment. I have Suzanne Gallagher signed up first. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm not going to attack you. I'm just going to speak from my heart. I am sort of here representing a lot of my neighbors in Calle and Robstown that have recently learned about the proposed ammonia plant that we feel is in our mutual backyard. And I know we didn't on the agenda, and I can't find anybody that wants to say, I know all about this, and let me talk to you about it. I can't, I can't. And I've... This has been my full-time job for three weeks now. So what I want to say is, we feel like... Okay, if you go to that property and you look to the left, within two miles, there is a nursing home, and there are two preschools. Across the street is an elementary school. So... And if you go to Robstown, down Avenue J, not even three miles away, is another nursing home. And at 2.6 miles are four schools, Robert Driscoll, Hattie Martin, an intermediate, and a junior high. And at three miles are two high schools. There's an open water canal that takes drinking water to Robstown that goes right by the property, just some drinking water. They mix it, I understand. But within five miles, you have two water filtration plants, one in Robstown, and one over across 77. So there was recently an explosion in Shepherd, Texas. It wasn't ammonia, it was chemicals. Nonetheless, it was a town of 2,000, and they had a shelter in place for a five-mile radius. Now, that was a town of 2,000. Where I live, three miles downwind from the proposed site, you're talking about 25,000 citizens, possibly. And so I would beg, plead for every one of you, everyone here, to drive to that location and get out and feel what it feels like out here. That's why I moved out here. I raise chickens. I raise my sons in my house. I moved out here to be in a ruralish atmosphere. I never saw, neither did my neighbors, who've been there 30 years on either side of me. We never would have envisioned or imagined something like this coming so close to us. It's not the place for it, in our opinion. We're the citizens. It may benefit someone, I'm sure it does, but it doesn't benefit any of us. And I'd just like to ask that you drive out there and get out of your car and take a look and see what it feels like. And when you look that way, you'll see the trees and you'll... And there's a cemetery where a lot of people's loved ones are buried that would be not even a quarter mile from this plant with two flares. And if you look this way, you'll see the trees and shelters of Robstown you can pick out. And if you look this way, you'll see the, not shelters, structures, sorry. If you look this way, you'll see trees and structures of Calle Allen and new neighborhoods with big houses they're building. Anyway, it doesn't make sense to me and a lot of other people. I feel like the location is unsafe. I feel like it's irresponsible. And I even feel like it's unethical to build something like that with a substance so volatile and lethal, so in the backyard of so many citizens. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rachel Caballero.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rachel Caballero, 522 Hancock. I'm here, one, I just want to remind everybody on your, that dais, that we have a First Amendment right to talk to you guys and speak to you and let you know every concern that we have on any level. And if you guys don't allow that, we will make changes come November. Or in the next two weeks. I'm here, one, because of Bob Hall Pier and the delays that have been happening. I am a constituent, by the way, taxpayer, and I'm here speaking on that behalf. So let's make note of that. I'm pretty much over the delay tactics that have been happening with Bob Hall Pier. In 1980, whenever it got wiped out, it was built in three years. There was no internet back then, just hardworking, honest people, honest politicians that weren't corrupt. And it got done in three years. In July, it'll be three years since our pier has been out. And nothing, no movement from this court. None. So it's time to get moving and get this pier built. Now, delay tactics, in my eyes, means maybe some title companies or some realtors are trying to privatize our beach access, privatize our pier, so we forget. And you guys can make your money selling whatever you need to sell, and we don't have access. It's funny. I know, it's funny, right? This is a true concern for the community. We want Bob Hall Pier. Restaurant, no restaurant. We want the pier built, and it needs to move forward. The delayed tactics are exhausting, and we're just going to start replacing people. That's what's going to happen. As far as this ammonia plant, the city of Corpus Christi yesterday put, threw you guys under the bus. This is a county issue. So Mr. Edlund, on this, we're looking for you for some guidance here. We do not want this plant in the area that it is being proposed. I'm not exactly sure what's happening here with our local governing bodies. It appears that the intention is to turn the coastal bin into an industrial dumping ground. We're trying to be overindustrialized by the port of Corpus Christi, the city of Corpus Christi, and now the county. I don't understand why we cannot conceptually grasp that we are a community here. We want to live a community life. We do not want to be a petrochemical town, even though electeds have turned us into that. And the fact that we had to find out about this ammonia plant off some signs in a vacant property, and this court did not come to the community and say, this is about to come into your neighborhood, is embarrassing. It's embarrassing. So I'm asking the court to do a better job of being transparent and getting the community involved on issues like this that are going to detrimentally impact our communities for generations to come. It's exhausting to come here all the time, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who didn't have the opportunity to sign up for public comment that wishes to speak?
Judge, for clarification, I'd like at our next court meeting to have a presentation item on this project. Whatever information that the county has been given to its officials, if any of us have been approached, I'd like for a discussion item, because I think that these points have been valid. I'm not discussing, I'm directing staff to help get this item on the agenda. If there are any documents, if we have had meetings, or any one of us individually, we should have that brought forward. If there's been a request from this company, it should be brought forward for the court to decide and to vote on this. So I totally agree, it's very concerning. And so whatever, if there is anything for us to take action on, that we place it on the next agenda. Thank you.
I'm just surprised you didn't come to the court.
Nothing, I mean, nothing...
I think we need to ask Ginny. And if we have a vote on it, we'll put it on there, but I am...
Excuse me, Judge. I think County Engineer has a meeting set up with that same company within the next few weeks. They're supposed to be coming here.
We don't have a...
So there's no decision to make aside from putting it on a future agenda? But that's good to know.
Yeah, and I guess just for the record, nobody's come to the Commissioners' Court and asked us anything about anything that I'm aware of has... So, and so Ginny, I guess my question is, and John, too, if nobody's coming to us to ask, like, I'm happy to do a presentation, but...
Well, that's what I'm saying. If there's something that has... I don't... Look, we only have us five. There may, obviously, something else came up. And I don't, I'm not trying to get into an issue that's not on the agenda. All I'm asking is if there's been any request from this Commissioners' Court or from the county, that that needs to be put together in an agenda item. I don't know who leads that item. I'm asking our staff, our fellow electeds, and our staff to come together and to figure out, has this agenda item, has this issue been requested?
Or what authority do we have over it? We have no authority over them. There's no vote to be taken.
So that's all I'm asking. I don't want us to get into discussion about this. I'm just asking for further direction, so our next meeting, we can have an item to discuss. If there is no action, then please let us know, so we can inform the public. If there has been a meeting, which apparently there is with Public Works, then we need to know about it, because we, I don't.
Excuse me, the only reason I have met with those folks, and the only reason I've met with them, because myself, and I don't know if Commissioner Jack has had the opportunity to meet with them, but I've been the only one here, okay? When they come in.
Oh, that's funny.
Okay.
No, it's not funny at all, sir.
We're going to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. So if there's something that we can bring up about it, so let's just stop there. Moving on to H Board Appointments. Item number one, Oasis County Beach Management Advisory Committee. I think there were six applicants, and we have three positions open.
I'm trying to get to that one. Judge, I would like to nominate Stephen Armstrong and Sherri Spurling for that board.
There's one, two that end December 24th, and one that ends December 25th.
Just a second, I'm trying to get there, sorry.
I would nominate Sherri Spurling for the position ending December 2025.
Oh, you want to do a specific, that's... Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Well, there's one, yes.
That's right. So there's three that came off, and we don't have to fill every spot, right? It's an up to. And so at this point, my...
You can nominate. You had the motion first.
It's okay, you can do it. But that makes sense, because that put Sherri Spurling in for 2025, and then put Stephen Armstrong in for one of the 24 slots, and then we can redo those later.
I'd like to nominate Correa for 2425.
That's not that board.
That's a different one.
It's a different board.
Yes, that's...
Number two.
Oh, you're talking about the advisory board?
Yeah, it's BMAT.
Oh, okay.
So I'll second that motion for Sherri Spurling to take the position that ends December 2025, and Stephen Armstrong that ends the short term for December 2024, would have to come back and be revoted on. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. There's one other position, and you're not ready to move forward with...
I'm sorry, I may be in the meeting, Judge, but we don't have to... Yeah, right.
We can, okay. And then moving on to item number two, discuss and consider the appointment of a Civil Service Commission Chairperson from the following Civil Service Commission appointees.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Alberto Correa.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to nominate Alberto Correa. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item number two, the consent agenda. Are there any items that you wish to have pulled for further discussion?
I want to pull D.
I'm sorry?
D. Five, seven, eight.
Seven, eight.
Five, seven, eight. And... 27.
And 27.
And, Judge, I just need to... I don't need to pull R. I just wanted to mention that what was circulated to the court was a picture of the exact area for the deeded land that will be deeded to at the county. And my understanding is that that will be supposedly reviewed, there'll be documents to review. And my understanding is that's, that will be supposedly reviewed, there'll be documents to review by the end of the week. So it was just, I just wanted to mention that. So I don't need to pull it, though. That's okay.
Any other items that need to be discussed further? Then I will accept a motion to pass the consent agenda excluding item B, number five, seven, eight, and 27.
You said B or G?
Did you say D?
No, D.
I thought you said B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correction, then.
And what was the other one? Did you have another?
Five, seven, eight, and 27, the numbers.
Was that the only one that was pulled, was D?
The only one.
Okay. So, so second your motion, if that was a motion?
Yes.
Okay. To, to pass the rest of them?
To pass the rest, with the exception of item D, number five, number seven, number eight, and 27. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. And then, moving on to item D, Commissioner Gonzalez, yes?
Yeah, just on number five, I just needed an update on that. Is this the, are we up to date on the payments for the CD County Public Health District? Are we, what payments are these from when, from when to when, or?
Commissioner, those are the payments for January and February for the Health Department, for the Health District.
January and February?
That's correct.
Okay. So are we up to, up to?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we are.
There's no other payments behind this?
We're not behind.
No.
Okay. All right, then I'll move.
Like 147,000 a month, is that?
Yeah, 147, 108. Okay, so move that we, I just want to make sure we're not in the rears on this here.
Second.
No. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to pass item number D, five. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item D, seven.
Seven and eight, kind of together, the, I don't know, we have a, have we generated a report on this? I know we've, we've paid Collier.
We have a final report. Yes, we have, but it's, it's on best practices moving forward. Do we want to talk about this, and executive, sorry, if you want to pull this? Yes, sorry.
That, that can't be discussed in open court at this point in time.
That's fine. I mean, no, take it to the executive.
Thank you.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight.
Yes. Let me write it in my notes. And then your other was 27?
27, and 27, I just, I just have a question on 27. This is, this is a closeout on the, the ADA on Oasis County, or are we still, I mean, I thought we were supposed to have closed out back in November or December, and there was an extension, but the amount of 375,000, is this the closeout?
Yes. Juan, you want to come up and speak about this one? This was a payment that we failed to give them. They waited a long time on, right?
That, that's correct. It was just a delayed payment, Commissioner.
Delayed payment that got pushed aside, and it was from back in November, I think, did we?
That's, that's correct.
So, but it's not the closeout payment?
Ah, is it also the, it's only the retained rate?
Oh, it says partial retainage?
Yeah, because they, they're still under.
They're still working on some more.
Yes, they're on some minor items.
How much longer are we going to be working? Thought we were supposed to be out of there by?
On that one, Commissioner, they're, they're, they're just doing their punch list items, and it's just for minor stuff that they need to take care of. So we're recommending the partial payment, Commissioner.
Well, what are we looking at as far as hopefully closing this thing out?
Hopefully by, just to give it a little bit of lead time, Commissioner, what are we, February, by end of March? Hopefully mid-March, by end of March.
Close out completely.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I just make sure, I just want to try and make sure we finish this thing out, so.
Yes, sir.
So I'll, I'll go ahead. So move 27, I move second.
Thank you, Judge.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor to pass D, 27, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. So, moving on to the regular agenda. Item 3A1, discuss and consider approval for method of procurement IFV invitation for bids for oil belt park improvements, and that is ARPA funds and the county judge's funds. So we are ready to go out for bids. Anything you need to add to that?
No, Judge, it's, it's a neat, it's a neat project. It's just as good as Commissioner Hernandez's project yesterday. It's going to renovate the whole area, and we're looking forward to it.
I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes, yes.
Judge, and I can't remember, was this the project that you funded?
Yes, the oil belt park, yes.
I mean, I, I do, I don't want to just blow through this. I think this is a significant project for the northwest part of our precinct, and I think it's got a very large number attached to it. And I'm hoping that all the folks out there realize that that came from your ARPA funds, and this is going to be a great project for, for the county, and.
Lots and lots and lots of kids use these parks. We're very excited about this.
It's been long overdue, that's correct.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner. Item number two, discuss and consider authorizing the county judge to execute agreement, if necessary, with our legislative consultants, Joel Romo and Patricia Shipton, for temporary services through September, the end of this year. I have had some, I'm asking for this because I've had some meetings with leaders throughout the community, and they are already working on some legislation, and I am suggesting that we need to have them on this, preparing for session and getting ready for bills that impact the county. I know there are two things we've been discussing about, and I would ask you to authorize this. There's 120,000 left in the legislative budget. There is plenty of funds there for us to do the next seven months. They both have said they are willing to take this on and meet with us and help craft and work towards legislation. So we can do the partial payment like we did at the end of last year, or the funds are even there for us to have them on like we normally do at the 5,000 a month, which would be 70,000 out of the 120,000.
Probably 5,000 a month, we're not, we don't want to pay them ahead of time, but.
I would suggest the, you know, the 5,000 a month, because in, in my experience, and being there as well, legislation and crafting legislation and working towards legislation is already happening. We need to be on top of the ball here. So I would suggest the 5,000. That would be my motion to allow, and, but.
Wait, so I'm confused, I'm sorry, Judge, you're saying this one says 2,500 a month through September, and then the 5,000 kicks in? I mean, that's.
This says 2,500. We have the funds for both, so, and they have said they are willing to do this, so.
So, so are you asking for 2,500 per month, per person, for the first time, and then go to 5,000 per month, per person after that? Or are you asking something different than, because I'm reading the agenda differently than what I.
The agenda says 2,500 per month. That was before I looked up to see if we had the budgeted funds in there. I would ask for the 5,000 per month. Well, I guess it would be 5,000, because it's 2,500 per person, so that's the 70,000 that we would have in the funds to pay for this already.
Right, that's what I'm.
Yes, 2,500 per person, yes. You're correct, sorry.
2,500.
Per month.
Right, that's, I.
Per person, per month, yes.
Through September, or are you wanting to extend it?
Through September, the end of the year, we will renew with our budget process. This is only to get us working on this, because it is already moving through, and people are working on these things.
So it's 2,500 a month for Romo, 2,500 a month for Shipton through September of '24, which is well within the budget that we have, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be 35,000 between the two.
Each.
17, 5.
Yeah.
17, 5 each.
Till the end of September.
Right. The 5,000 would be the total of 70,000, but if you're doing 2,500 a month?
Per person.
Per person, it's 17,500 per person.
And that's what you're asking for, right, Judge?
Yes.
Okay, if that's a motion.
That is the motion.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of wetland mitigation project. And I see Mr. Scott Cross, you are here, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. So, first off, I'd like to see if y'all have any burning questions with what the agenda item language reads. I've vetted this extensively to get this mitigation done, and I've had, had several meetings with the Army Corps and the regulatory agencies. What's before you right now is a path forward that they've all agreed that would work, and also working with the, our county attorney's office, it works as well. So do y'all have any questions specifically about this that I can address? Or do you just want me to just give you an overall 50,000-level approach?
And is this relate, this mitigation project is related to?
Padre Bay Park.
Right, just to be clear, I want.
Yeah, okay.
We want everyone to know upfront.
I don't want to go into.
No, no, we know, we're public, we want the public to know. This is the mitigation project that was originally, you thought was originally going to work. You felt like it's going to work better at Clayburg.
Well, it's going to be both. So let, let me, let me do this for you, okay?
But this will get us out of the problem with Padre Bay Park.
You should have this map right here. This is Packery Channel Nature Park map, okay? So the, moving the mitigation for Padre Bay has already been agreed upon. That's no longer an issue. That's already a done deal. So it doesn't exist at Padre Bay. It's just a matter of where we're going to do it at. And so, over at Packery, if you look at your maps, I hope they printed them in color for you.
They didn't. That's okay. But there they are. There they are in color, right there.
Okay, so the hash marks in red are what's going to be created. That's upland we turned into wetland. And by doing that, you're going to connect them to existing. So now you get credit for creation and enhancement, because you're connecting them to existing wetlands. So you can see the yellow boundary of, of Packery Channel Nature Park there. We don't have a lot of room to work with over there with existing wetlands and creating new ones. So in order to get the ratios we need, we're going to have to go to the Clayburg property. And so, but the, the beauty of this is, is that throughout all of our eight years of data collection and research on these migratory birds, this is something that we've noted is needed, creating more wetlands for the migratory birds than what we, birds, than what we have over there. So it fits with our, our management of the park as a nature park. Now, if you look at the next map, there's a, Teresa, see if you can pull, or Connie, see if you can pull this one up right here.
Where is it?
Right there.
Uh, did you attach it?
Yep, it's attached, it should be. They all, all of these maps were attached. But there's a section of upland area in between two wetlands. I don't know. Figure two, figure two, figure two. So let, let me go ahead and get that up. I don't want to get ahead of myself. Well, anyhow, I'm going to keep talking. I hate dead air. So, so what I did was, is that the maps that she's working with on getting pulled up here, especially to show you the Clayburg property, that'll work right there. You see that little red hash area in between those two wetlands over there? That would be created. By creating that and connecting that to the existing wetlands, again, you're getting credit for creation and enhancement. This gives us the ratios and the least, the path of least resistance to accommodate what is needed to do the mitigation work that would have been done at Padre Bay, and probably a little bit more. And I always like to throw in a little bit extra, because when it goes through inter-agency review, it usually, you know, eats like popcorn. It's real easy for them to check off all the boxes. So this right here, the reason why I'm coming to y'all with this is that the, the Packery Channel Park has already been voted on and approved by the Board of Park Commissioners, since that's dedicated park land that falls under their purview. The Clayburg property is not dedicated park land. So ultimate decisions with what we do on the Clayburg property falls to the Commissioners' Court. So what I really need for y'all's approval here today is, is that we can do the mitigation on Clayburg as depicted, and then with that approval, then I'll go back to the court, and I'll start getting the mitigation plan and conservation easement paper, paperwork done. And when that gets ready to be filed, I'll bring it back to court to you, and we file it with the county clerk.
And in your opinion, you believe this will take care of everything?
It will take care of it.
I, I make the motion to pass it.
Second.
And it's no financial, it's no financial burden to the county.
Go Mesa Funds, I read that.
Yep. And, and again, I don't, not to, I don't want to blow through things, but I don't want, I don't want to delay either. This is a big deal. This is correcting a wrong that was perpetuated, not by this court, by a former member of this court, and now we are doing it. I want to appreciate the, the work that the judge and you have done on this, and, and the permit holder, who has been extremely generous in working with us on this one, really didn't have to, because he had a, he had a permit. And so, good job, Scott, Coastal Parks Board, Judge Scott. Mr. Lang, we appreciate all this, because this rids ourself of a problem that we shouldn't have had, and that this court never had anything to do with. And I appreciate you doing it, and want to say that publicly, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and if, if we'd have followed the correct sequence of procedures that would usually go along with this kind of stuff, this is exactly the way it should have played out.
Exactly. If, it, exactly, precisely. And this is, and you know, this is, this is a good use of that Clayburg property that we have. This is exciting stuff. I mean, it's enhancing wetlands. It, it maintains those deed restrictions, which those deed restrictions are very clear. We can't go vertical, we can, but we can do all kinds of cool enhancements out there that, you know, when we have the funding to do, or when we have the need to do like this, we can do. So this is a, this is a win-win, and this is how it could have been and should have been right from the get-go.
It benefits greatly Packery Channel Nature Park with, with what we do there for making it a premier birding destination for neotropical migratory birds, because birding is big here. Y'all know that. And then, out at Clayburg, on the Clayburg property, even if I was to make any enhancements out there, I'm going to avoid the wetlands. I'm going to keep those natural features, so they become ecotourism features with minimum footprint, if and when I get some money to create some access, public access points on the backside of it, you know, for, so people can get out there and enjoy it, you know. But it has to be controlled. You know, before we got that property, there was nothing controlled out there, and there was a lot of crazy stuff that went on, on that Clayburg property. But all that's behind us now.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass this, approve this, all those. Is there any other discussion? Sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Scott.
You bet.
Thanks for your work, too. Item number four, approve ratification of a source well cooperative contract on the CAT lease purchase agreement with Holt. Is that yours? For coastal parks, yes. Don't go away.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. This is just a, it was a, there was a problem with the language that just needed to be cleaned up.
That's why we pulled it last time, and it's through your department funds, so I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. We didn't let you get out of here. Item number five, receive an update on deadlines for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds from Grantworks and all related matters. I believe Amanda and Ken are supposed to be on Zoom. Can you?
I'm here.
Oh, hello, sorry. I've got in my notes you're going to be on Zoom.
I'm here. We made the trip down.
Very good. I'm glad you could make it. Good to see you.
Good to see y'all. Well, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Amanda Holton, and I am with Grantworks, and I will serve as your American Rescue Plan Act Project Manager. My colleagues partnering with me on Oasis County include Jessica Johnstone, who is on Zoom, and with me today is Jessica Hissam. As a recent graduate of Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, I am excited to work with Oasis County. I come here today to address a crucial aspect of the funds, which is the obligation deadline. The obligation deadline is December 31st, 2024. For funds to be considered obligated, there must be a contract or a purchase order. This is how the Treasury defines an obligation. Commissioners' Court approval, a resolution, or an allocated budget alone is not considered an obligation.
We just recently learned of that, and it was shocking. So thank you for bringing that and pointing it out explicitly, yes.
Yeah. Funds that are not formally obligated by December 31st, 2024 are at risk for being recouped by the Treasury. After all the funds are obligated by December 31st, 2024, all ARPA funds then must be fully expended by December 31st, 2026. So in the backup that you guys have in your packet, um, there's an example of a project life cycle that we've included. And it shows timelines of just a general project and how long that would take.
Could you address something while you're here about that with these deadlines and stuff? If projects come in under budget, that money is just then lost. You can't move it to use it somewhere else or anything.
After 2024, that's correct.
That was another question that we received. I wanted clarification. Yes.
So one thing that we'll do to assist in that and that will work with Anna and her team, who have been fantastic to work with, um, so far. And we're really excited to work with them and, and all of you guys. So, one thing that we've, um, one thing that Grantworks will do to assist in this is to constantly monitor the contracts. So that, that does not happen. Or if it, that is not the goal at all for that to happen. And so we will take any path that we have to, to make sure it doesn't happen. So we, we will help Anna and her team to make sure that, that does not take place. So, yes, yes.
Very good.
Do we have any questions or anything about the timeline? Thank you for pulling that up. So, yes, this is a timeline of just a general project that could take place. And as you can see, there's many steps and many different, um, amounts of time that it could take until full project completion. So, in order to obligate funds, um, it must be under contract. And that would take place, um, if you could go to the second slide, or the first slide, slide, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, um, under project implementation, that is where contract would take place. So as you can see, we still have a pretty good amount of time and activities that need to take place in order to obligate funds. And so it's, it is just very important that all project ideas, decisions start happening so that we can start moving forward.
So based on the, uh, the sample timeline that you gave us, everything should be ready to go as far as approved by June, end of June of this year? I mean, out the door, out, approved by this court. And if it, I mean, technically we have till December, but based on what you're sharing here is, I know these are general timeframes, some, some projects may be truncated. But overall, that's probably a good date to shoot for. So end of June.
Yes, yes. I would, I would agree with that. Um, we, we're saying about June, July is a really good time. And I know that budgets start taking place as well and, and the county starts talking about budgeting. So that's usually a good time.
So it's not really December.
Yeah, it's not really December at all. Yes, yeah.
Unless it's a simple project, which, that's simple. With ARPA, we've learned that, that word doesn't exist, right?
You need December to do the contract, though. Not to finish the project.
Yeah, but you don't get the contract started unless June. If you don't get. Yeah, it has to be signed by December.
The selection and.
Yes, yeah.
So just like mine today, still, just because it went out, it's not the contract signed. So I'm still in the second slot there or something. Yes, yes.
And there's, you know, the.
And that's been a year.
Hey, and, yeah, Juan, do you hear this? That's why I keep pushing you on that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm telling you. I've got to get that London deal going because I mean, we've got to get it under contract and get going. I mean, it's big time stuff. And that's why I'm pushing on the piers. I'm pushing on the drainage. I mean, I got big projects with big money associated with them and.
We understand.
We got to get, no, I'm just, I'm really talking to Juan because I mean, I'm, and other, you know, we've got to, kind of, like, I know you're doing it.
We're all pointing back there and we're trying to get him some relief and get him focused on just these, yes.
We're here to help and assist them and they've been fantastic to work with. We're really excited to work with Nuasis County. And, uh, the staff has been amazing to partner with. So we thank you guys.
You've been awesome on our calls as well. So we thank you for being there and being available and working with us and our crazy schedules and everything else that you've done. But thank you very much. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
It's nice to meet you in person.
Yes, yeah, you guys do. Have a great day.
I appreciate you coming down and we always see people in Zoom and, you know, good to see them in person.
I had it in my notes you were going to be Zoom.
We're here. I love Corpus Christi. So we're really excited to be here and to work with you guys. So thank you.
Just don't, just don't bill us for travel time. That's all. We get, we get a little persnickety about that.
No, no, no. We will.
Or Starbucks.
All good. All good. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners.
Thank you. The next item for discussion is item number six, discuss and consider unallocating 350,000 from the Nuasis County Civil Process Software. I believe Commissioner Mottas and I both have 175,000 allocated to that. And we need to unallocate that and put it back into our personal budgets. Because we did check and this was not your stuff for the county attorney. And this was voted on and, um, voted down and then brought back. And this is not being utilized. So I would make the motion to unallocate the county judges and Commissioner Precinct Three funds and reallocate these back into our personal funds. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. And then we need to get moving on where we're going to move that money to quickly. Because June now is our go-to date. Um, moving on to item number seven.
Related matters to see where we're going to move it to?
I don't think, did you want to, are you ready to allocate yours?
No, we're, we're working on some projects.
I thought it was, in addition to that, there was something else.
No, two of the remaining unallocated, um, I think it was on there in case, I think we put it in case he had something that he wanted to allocate.
We're working on it, Commissioner, so we'll, yeah. No, we're working on it, yes, sir.
Okay, item number seven, discuss and consider allowing, and these seven and eight really go together. Is why I wanted these here like this. Discuss and consider allowing Commissioner Brent Chesney, Precinct Four, to make requests to outside entities for additional funding for the third-party concessionaire. I wanted them together for the Bob Hall Pier. I understand it is Commissioner Chesney's intent to allocate his 1 million back into the concessionaire portion. And I wanted to make sure that this vote, while we always allow commissioners to, and your own monies, your own pots, to do with what you want to do them with. We allow you to do that, but my request here was contingent upon finding the outside funds. Because one of the things that the county could not do and in our budget year or anything else was to fund this. And it was my intent also that the, um, public taxpayer dollars not be used on this. But if we find outside entities who are willing to participate, I think that was the avenue that we go to, to seek those funds. So I would, um, allow Commissioner Chesney to move this money on a contingent that we find the additional funds that are not taxpayer dollars from outside agencies. And that would also, at that point, allow the Jacobs Engineering to go forward to the one-story, one-building, build a county concessionaire. Refurbish that thing. That would be my contingency plan. That's why I'm sorry. I know it's your item, Commissioner. But I had some stipulations I wanted to put on there. So, um, if that's okay with you, that's the way I would like to move forward on that item.
Yes, ma'am, and I will make motions that will reflect that. Um, if that is okay, then I can do that and we can have discussion and.
Have we been having discussion yet?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so the most, the first motion would be, um, related to item seven, just because I'm taking it in order, would be to discuss and consider allowing myself to make requests to outside entities for additional funding for third-party concessionaire rebuild on Bob Hall Pier in compliance with the Nuasis County Commissioners Court policy. And then to bring back any positive response for court consideration. That would be my motion.
I think I would change that from you to the Commissioners Court to see that. Yes, anybody, not just specific to you. Yes.
I don't think anybody else, well, that's true. Anybody, if you'd like to, if anybody else would like to, me or anybody on the court, that's fine. I'm happy to, if anybody wants to help, that'd be great.
Yes.
So amended to include anyone on the court that would like to make that request on behalf of this project.
I'll second that motion because that was my request. Yes, okay.
I have a, I have a discussion on that.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Reynolds.
This, the, the, what's written here is not very clear unless we keep saying concessionaire, I guess, the word. So it says the way, the, to bring back any positive responses, but also in the bottom of that one, it says the way was previously, was, the way was previously done. So on number eight, we approved this one here, we go number eight. It said to build in a third-party concessionaire of a pier that was previously there prior to Hurricane Hannah. So that was a restaurant and a bar.
It's just a building, that's all we're talking about. No, I'm just letting you know.
But I'm just saying, this is not really clear here what we, what we're doing. If you say concessionaire, are you tugging up a concession stand? Are we talking about a restaurant and bar? I mean, I, we, we have to make this, we want to be transparent, this is be transparent, you know, that we need to know what it is. If I'm going to go ask somebody for money, say, what are you going to build? Concessionaire, well, what is that? You know, am I going to say it's a restaurant and a bar? Because the way it was back then, it was a restaurant and a bar. And we're saying here we're going to bu, build it back to where it was.
That's correct.
Well, I mean, I'm, I don't.
Back to the building that it was.
I'm not for building a restaurant and a bar. So, um, so, you know, if I go and ask for somebody for some money, I would ask somebody to help us build a concession stand, you know? Because that's what really should be in the pier, concession stand. And, um, uh, it, I just, it, it just is, you know, very, and we have, and if it's somebody's donation, will there be any ties to that donation or any kind of a?
That's why I have to bring it back, Commissioner, just to, yeah, I don't know. I don't, I haven't asked anybody yet, so I don't know.
You can't even go ask until we give them permission.
Do we have, and it says here in the policy really that we should know ahead of time, were we actually going to go ask, right, before we go ask? And according to the policy.
Say that.
Jenny showed me the policy where it shows that.
It says we have to know. Is that the way it is, Jenny?
No, the policy says funding.
Do we have permission to ask and, and describe the entity that we're going to ask?
Well, I'm just telling you, I'm going to ask everybody who's possible, willing to give. But I mean, it doesn't say that. It says.
Not taxpayer dollars.
Right.
Not.
It says, individual members of the court who seek funding on behalf of the county shall disclose in writing to the funding entity whether or not they are requesting funding pursuant to an order of the court. That's all it says. It doesn't say you have to disclose who because.
Another section there, Jenny, it's just saying, I don't have anybody send it to me. And it says also, do we need to identify the entity that we're going to ask for money before we ask them to approve by the court? So, but anyway, I'm just saying, you know, this is not clear to me. I, I can't really, I mean, I, I would love to have a concession stand. You know, I would let maybe a restaurant, but not, not a restaurant and a bar. We're not in the bar business. We shouldn't be in the bar business. We shouldn't even be in the restaurant business. You know, the beer was a concession stand a long time when the beer was there, when the pier was there. You know, this concession, this restaurant and, and bar was built illegally and this, what we got in trouble with Department of Justice. You know, so we had to pay for that. So, uh, now we're going back to the same thing that, that we got in trouble for. So now, now we're asking for donations for, I guess it'd be private donations. It can't be taxpayers' money. So, um.
We got in trouble for that because we used grant funds on a project that was not supposed to be used on.
I know exactly. We got in trouble, Judge, I was there. I fought it every, every minute of it. You know, we got in trouble because we, we legally built it with grant money and, and we had, we had to pay 800,000 dollars back, you know? So, uh, or build something else at the Caldwell Pier. But anyway, I'm just saying, this is not very clear to me. And I think it needs clarification of what we talking about. And if you're talking about a, a restaurant and a bar, then we need to say that here. You know, we need to say that's what it's going to build. You know, concessionaire is still a misleading word. And, you know, and the Commissioner, I know how you feel about this thing and, and, you know, but you know how I feel too. And you and I talked about this many times, you know? So, um, but this is my, my opinion and I just can't support it.
I'm waiting to see what Jenny says about the.
I also have an opinion, Judge Mag.
Can, let's get Jenny to answer that one question first, if she will, for us, on whether we have to list who he is going to ask funds from specifically.
The court policy that was updated only is, uh, it doesn't require that the court member, uh, identify what sources. This worked in conjunction with the hospital district amendment to their policies where, um, you know, they were requiring identification of things. But this, that went into this court's thing only says, individual members of the Commissioners Court who seek funding on behalf of the county shall disclose in writing to the funding entity, uh, whether or not they're requesting pursuant to an order of the whole court. So it doesn't speak to identifying the funding sources to, back to the court.
Asking, okay.
Unless there's another part of the, the.
Nope. I mean, I, yeah, I.
Commissioner Hernandez wanted to speak next. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I think we're opening the door to, uh, problems. When people start donating, does that mean some of those folks are going to get special, uh, treatment from members of the court for their donation? This goes on, we hear that about it in the news every day, where even some Supreme Judges have gotten favors and from donations they, they've received. So I think we're, you know, threading on very thin ice here. Uh, and I don't think we should do that. So, and as far as, uh, using the ARPA monies, I mean, the ARPA money says, you can't construct, you can't construct new addition. If you're going to build exactly what the concession was, you, I mean, you can use the ARPA money. But the way I've understood and they've told me, the ARPA money is to reconstruct and not build new or make it larger or whatever.
That's exactly what this plan is, to reconstruct what was there. It's not to build any additional because I was against that as well.
Well, yes, but, uh, what, when they rebuild this, when they rebuild it illegally, okay? Now, are we going to go back to build the concession stand the way it was when they first built it? And I'm talking about what the way it was like in the sixties or seventies? That should, the way it should be done because that's the original, uh, project or the size of the building.
So first of all, um, the building wasn't built illegally. Second of all, this part of the building is not the building that you're talking about. The building that was built with the grant money is still standing. Now, you haven't been out there in a while, so you may not have seen that. Second of all, we are, the, the ARPA people that were hired by this court, um, if you.
Amanda's here. She could tell us the comment.
If you read in the backup, the backup clearly says this project is eligible. We can use the funds for it. And this court has repeatedly voted to allow every commissioner to do with his or her, the judge, she's not a commissioner, she's a judge, with the ARPA funds that you have been designated. We have always, um, allowed each commissioner in their precinct to work on projects in their precinct. This is a rebuild. This is not a new build. This is a rebuild. And we've always allowed commissioners to use ARPA funds as they see fit for existing projects in their precinct. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for, uh, general fund money. I'm not asking for COs. I'm not asking for anything else. I'm asking to be able to use the ARPA funds that I have been allocated for my precinct to use for my precinct. And that's what this is. It's eligible. Uh, believe me, I've been working on this for months to make sure it's eligible. There will be no delay whatsoever to the pier, no delay to the pier budget. Because we have a large contingency in the pier budget and because we've done some outstanding work lately with a, a lot of people. We've been involved in trying to make sure that we build a pier at, for, for the right price. And we've been able to come up with some new construction methods that will save us money there. So the, the, the project manager, who has also put in the backup in your agenda that shows there will be no delay and there will be no change to the budget of the pier and that we'll still have plenty of money to build the pier and plenty of money to, to do this. So I, I came up with a, with something that, um, I felt in the past, the court has supported. Which is allowing and accepting donations to this county. And we accept donations from people outside this county all the time. And I don't know if, if anybody, I've never, I don't know any about special favors or I don't even know what you can do as a special favor for someone who donates to the county for a project. But we've accepted donations from people for years and years and years if they want to donate to the county. If they don't, they don't have to. If they want to, they can. So this was, this was, uh, something that, that I was able to thankfully work with the judge on this. She, you know, I appreciate her willingness to, to listen and, and, and really work on this. Because, uh, she said at, at her last meeting, she was never opposed to restaurants. She just, you know, so we came up with a way that met, um, what she could live with. And, and hopefully the rest of the court could because it's, I'm using my precinct for allocations. And I'm going out and asking for funds from outside entities. I can't even imagine why someone wouldn't allow that to happen other than you just don't like the project. And that's okay. You can just admit you don't like the project. That's okay. But this is, this is about as. But this is, this is about as good as I can come up with to, to get something done in my precinct that I think is super important. I think it's important to this county, to the precinct. I get calls from all over. I get calls from people in precinct ones, two, three, and tons and four, saying, please build this, please get this done. This is a great project. We love having this opportunity to go and have a venue. And basically, we're a landlord, so, so we may use it today for a restaurant. We may use it next week for something else because the restaurant doesn't work, but we're, we're a landlord. It's going to be a fair market deal. The deal has to go out for bids. That'll be up to the, that'll be up to the Coastal Parks Board. They handle that. But that'll go out for an RFQ or an RFP and everybody will have an open shot. And it'll be a fair market deal. It has to be, can't be a gimme. The court will see all of that. Will bring it all to the court to show, this is the parameters that, that we're working under. So, I don't know how much more open and transparent to be. If you just don't like it, I get it. But, I mean, I think it's fair and I've voted for projects in your precinct and commissioners' precincts that I don't think are a hundred percent great, but you used your ARPA funds and I've, I've voted for them because I thought that was the right thing to do. If we're going to change how we do things on that too, then, okay, let's, I guess.
I've also lost my ARPA funds, you know, because they won't use them somewhere else. I didn't get the opportunity you getting, you know, that you can use your ARPA funds however you.
You lost your funds for ineligible projects, Commissioner. They weren't your fault that they were ineligible, but they were ineligible.
No, but I could have moved them elsewhere. And as far, as far as, as far as.
You moved it to Driscoll?
As far, as far as the restaurant, it was built illegal, Commissioner. Uh, seven hundred and some thousand dollars that was given to the county was for inspection of the, of the pier.
It wasn't built illegally. It was built, it was already built, Commissioner. You keep saying built illegally.
There was.
Okay, okay, okay. Just a second, one at a time.
That's not right. It was an illegal.
Commissioner, there was a small building there, but it was not a restaurant, okay?
Okay.
But it was a concession stand.
Let me take a break here because Troy Adler with the Parks Board would like to speak. He's had his hand up and I have missed him and he would like to speak.
Well, thank you, Judge, and I appreciate you, Commissioner, as taking this up for discussion today. Uh, the Parks Board wholly supports and has in the past and will continue forward to have this third-party concession area. Uh, it's been a, one of the truly incoming producing assets of this county and has paid for majority of the operations throughout the entire year for this county, uh, for the Parks Board and all the operations and all the beach cleaning and everything that we're doing up down the coast. So we, at this point, I think we're just looking for some assistance and trying to help the Island community and the entire community of Corpus Christi to have an opportunity to get back to, uh, a place that we can, we've all enjoyed and, and the tourists that we have here has been amazing. So, uh, from behalf of, uh, the Parks Board of Commissioners, we are unanimous in our support for a, uh, third-party concession. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. And to be clear, this isn't a done deal. This is going out and asking for the funds. If we don't come up with the funds, this, uh, will have to be changed quite possibly by June because of the deadline we were just given in court. So this is a very short timeline to go out and try to raise money for this. And it needs to be moving forward if there is any chance of it. Yes.
Just to make, Commissioner Chesney and I have talked about this many times. And I don't have anything against the restaurant either, but you know, and I've told him that many times. I don't just want to hear that you have a bar. You know, the bar is the one that creates the problems. We're not in the bar. We're not in alcohol business and it should be part of the county business. Shouldn't be part of the parks business. Shouldn't be part of anybody's business. And, you know, a restaurant's a restaurant, a bar is a bar. And, you know, people, you know, things happen when you have a bar that don't usually happen when you have a restaurant. You know, so, uh, you, you know, I just want to say that, you know, what we're doing here, if, if it's something that we know we can live with, fine. But, you know, never support a restaurant with a bar, so.
I, I was surprised to find out as well that the other pier has a liquor license or they sell alcohol. They serve beer.
For about thirty and forty years.
It's been a, a standard, I, I was surprised when I found that out, but yes.
It's helped, yep.
Yes.
They've been doing it for thirty or forty years, Commissioner, and you've been here the whole time too. That's what I'm saying. This is nothing new. We're just rebuilding.
I wanted, I'm glad the judge brought that up because I did want to ask that question. I don't know. Probably maybe Theresa might help us. So, we have already one instance where we're doing that as a county. But is that a county or is that through a vendor? I can't remember the setup.
That would be Scott. You want to come answer that? Scott, you're here. He'll know more. Very quick. Yes or no?
Yes or no?
We have a third-party concessionaire contract.
That's, that's all I want to know. Thank you. So I guess that's my concern is, as long as they're third parties, if we're not doing it directly. Because really like the Fairgrounds is really like a third-party vendor as well.
They sell alcohol out there by the way.
They have, so that, that, I mean, I think it's a legitimate concern that's brought up is the county selling it. And if we're not, if it's third-party, then I'm okay with that. Because I think that's a valid concern. But as long as it's set up the same way, then I'm good with that. So.
He's right. They sell alcohol in Robstown.
That, that, that's pretty much what I wanted to make sure was.
That's a good point to bring out. And yes, we do, and the liability rests on the.
I just want to clarify, Judge, if it's like that, you know, that's something that I would agree to. If it's a third-party, have them be responsible for anything that goes on there, you know, that has to do with the liquor. And I wouldn't have, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
And I appreciate that. It's just, but it's, and Commissioner Modas is right. It's the exact same situation that we have in Robstown. We have a third-party concessionaire and they sell alcohol and in Robstown at the third-party concessionaire at Fairgrounds. And they have, as long as that's been built. So, I appreciate, I didn't even think about that, Commissioner Modas, so thank you for bringing that up. This is going on and, and are we going to, under this argument, then we can't, we can't sell liquor in Robstown either. And that makes.
And the thing is, is this is only if the funding is raised.
Absolutely.
So we're kind of, that's like the next step after if this even passes.
I gotta go find money.
So we have a motion and a second to move forward to allow, um, us to seek those additional funds. Is there any other discussion on that? And if those funds are found to allow Commissioner Chesney to move his one million ARPA funds back into this project?
I actually have a separate motion.
Oh, that's a separate motion, sorry.
Number eight. I was trying to keep it on, on, on item, but the first one is just to, to allow myself and any member of the court to go out and seek the funding.
And I seconded that motion. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, number eight, you have a motion?
I, I do, Judge, and then certainly for discussion. The, this is a motion to approve rebuilding the third-party concessionaire building at Bob Hall Pier, moving precinct four ARPA funds to the third-party concessionaire building contingent on additional funds being found to complete the rebuild. And once funds are found to fully move forward with the design on the third-party concessionaire and complete that design going forward.
So it basically just.
It's all contingent upon.
Contingent upon, uh, yes.
It's a, it's a wording motion, but.
I will second that motion that allows you to move your money, your designated funds, contingent upon finding the rest of the funds and allowing Jacobs Engineering to go forward with the finishing of the design. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, the design for what?
For the third-party concession.
For the standing building.
So the, the building.
So, can we, if you're going to say something to say for the third-party restaurant and bar, right?
But the judges who came up with the third-party concessionaire term a long time ago, and I've tried to live within that term.
We have all tried to say concessionaire. It is a hamburger and.
Right, because we can use, and what, what, um, and what, um, sorry, Grant Works has said is, we don't want to be specific as to what the use is because if it, if it's, if we want to use it for something else some other day, then we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves and be too specific. So this is how Grant Works has told me to do this. This is how I've worked with the judge on language. This is how, you know, like I said, I've been working on this for three or four months to put this together in a way that, that is legal, that is right, that is justified. So that's the wording I would ask that we stick with based on what I've been advised.
Commissioner Modas would like to comment.
Oh, I'll wait.
Oh, I just wanted to comment really quickly. I'm sorry. It is a multi-purpose building that the county can use at their discretion. So at the time that the building is built, like Commissioner Chesney said, it can be a fair, it will be a fair and equitable process to then determine what the building will be used for. So I just wanted to make that comment.
And that's what I was wanting to say because there, there is no connection or condition to use the previous concessionaire that we had. Let's clarify that, right? Is that correct, Commissioner? Or Jenny or anyone?
Scott, I'm going to let, this is a Coastal Parks Court issue. I'm going to let.
No, I don't want, I want, no, because this is. We can open it up to.
It will be open to anyone. Let me quickly clear, clean this up here because the concessionaire contract is solely between the concessionaire and the Board of Park Commissioners. It never comes before court. That's under their authority under statute three twenty, Local Government Code three twenty-one. So what's going to happen is, is that we're going to go out with an RFP, Request for Proposals. We get these proposals in, we're going to get all kinds of people recommending what they want to do. And it doesn't necessarily mean it's a restaurant bar. Doesn't mean it's just a hot dog stand. It may be a combination of everything, but we'll go down and we'll score that and we'll evaluate it. We'll look at the financial stability of these people to perform. Then the board will make a decision on who they want to select. We select, we work with Jenny's office on getting the contractual agreement ready to go with all the bonding and insurances for whatever they're going to do. And we go to work, then we negotiate the profit sharing. And that's based on their gross profits, not that.
Is that was our approval?
Huh?
Is that was our approval?
No, no.
They don't need our approval.
They come to us when they're in trouble for approval. You know, why not, why not?
I'm just following the law.
That's, that was a whole nother issue I didn't want to get into because I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez. I got an issue with that. But we'll, we'll take it one step at a time. I mean, even just to present it to us, even if they have final authority, I think it would be good practice for them to bring it to court so they could at least hear us or Chairman Adler, whoever, can come and share with them. We have some concerns or we love what you're doing or what you're going to do.
Okay.
I would suggest on that. But just to stick with the issue is that it, it's still going to, there's still a process and we're not tied into the previous concession.
Oh, no, 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 no.
In light of the problems that we went through in the past year, I would hope, and I have expressed my thoughts to, uh, Chair Troy Adler, that you don't go out to this until the building. It is a county building and we don't need, um, concessionaire that involved in our construction and what we're going to build and everything. This is a county facility, a county building and that, until you're almost through with completion, that, that would be.
Same thing in Port A. We're renovating Horace Caldwell concession space. And then we'll get RFPs in for what do they want to use it for and we'll evaluate it. Okay?
Yes.
Well, and, and, yeah, and so that's, that's a big key too is, until I see the whites of the eyes of this building, I would not do anything.
Not do any opening, yes. So we have a motion and a second to approve, um, the commissioner with the stipulation in moving forward with finding the funds and going ahead with the engineering, um.
Did we already vote on that?
No, we voted on the first one, but the second one is contingent upon the first, so we have to add that into the language, so. We have a motion and a second already.
Yep.
Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Two nays and three ayes, the motion passes. Then, moving on to number nine. Discuss and consider funding for County Road forty-four bridge replacement project with ARPA precinct three funds.
Yes, Judge, this is my item.
Yes.
So just for some background, we, uh, we have been approached, we as the county, my office, have been approached by the City of Robstown and the Oasis County Drainage District to assist on a project that we've had. Our Public Works Director, our County Engineer, Juan V. Matela, has been out there with me, I think at least on one or two occasions onsite. And then we have actually, um, had several other discussions leading up to this point. Uh, but this is just to, to get us to move forward on the estimate. It's a, it's a hefty price tag of four hundred thousand dollars, but this is a bridge, County Road forty-four that has been washed away by flooding that we had almost a year ago. Is that right, Juan? And so, um, this is a county road. It serves a county purpose. And so we're, uh, I'm bringing this before the court one so that we could utilize ARPA funding because of the, um, um, the amount of the project that's being asked. So it will take some time to get work through, but we are working on it. And so just wanted to bring it for y'all's review.
Has it been cleared with Grant Works? It's been approved that it is a project that we can spend? Yes, then.
And so the, the attachment just kind of shows, um, the, the numbers that I have available as far as funding. But I don't know, will, will this need to come for any other items, Juan or Edward or?
So essentially, this is a reallocation, Commissioner. You're just allocating the money from the fund to this project. And then we're, we've got the discussions with Juan and what we're going to do is how we're going to approach the, uh, actual construction and.
And so I think my ask would be to approve, but on condition that an agreement is drawn up between Oasis County, the Drainage District number two, and the City of Robstown to complete that. Because I think there's, would it be an MOU, Jenny, that needs to be finalized on this?
Yeah, um, there are some issues that we do need to mechanically work out, logistically, I guess, as to who's going to be contracting with whom and who owns what.
Okay. But this, this would allow us to, contingent on that, so they still have to clear it. This is just to kind of get the money approval part okayed so that they can start moving on that end. Then allow the legal to finalize, approve everything. But that's the ask today. It says to approve this recommendation of ARPA use to replace the bridge in partnership with Oasis County Drainage District two and City of Robstown. On contingent on the agreement being drawn up between our Oasis County Legal Department, County Attorney, and both entities. So that's my motion.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion?
Just, uh, we've done this already over there on County Road thirty-six with Martin Marietta when we rebuilt that bridge with the city, the Drainage District and the county as well.
We do these kind of projects, is what you're saying already, so, yes. And it's been approved by Grant Works. We just need the MOUs and the county attorney. So contingent upon that, I'm agreeing moving forward, so.
And Juan, this is, um, this is a half and half, right? It's like half of it is owned by Oasis Drainage District two and half is owned by the City of Robstown, something like that?
That, that's correct. The, the road, the road belongs to the City of, uh, Robstown and then the, uh, the drainage way that's, that's receiving it is from the Drainage District and, and the city. So it's half and half, Commissioner, correct?
It's half and half. And of course, both entities don't have the, the funding access that we do and obviously wanted to use all of our allocations. That's one of the reasons why I committed to doing this. If you ask them, of course, the sooner the better to get it complete, which we could probably do it if we went through our normal funding source. But I'd rather use our ARPA funding, which means, it, it, how much time do you anticipate it would take to, that, that this process adds on to it? As far as design, some of the designs have already been drawn up, but as far as design approval and completion and all that?
Uh, probably about a couple of months, Commissioner.
So not too bad?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Judge, a number, I want to go back to number eight.
You oppose.
Vote in favor of the motion, but for the record, that I'm only voting in favor of the record because, um, contingent that it will go to RF, RFPs, RFQs, whatever it is. And the third-party person, it's not a designated person already, so.
Oh, absolutely. That was, that was clear in there, yeah.
Thank you.
So you can show him voting aye for number eight, yes, uh-huh. Uh, moving on, and we finished that one. Everyone voted on that. It was unanimous, okay? Moving on to item number ten, discuss and consider approval for method of procurement IFB for Amistad Veterans Memorial Park improvements. And, sorry, go ahead, Edward. You're standing there. Thank you.
No, thank you, Judge, and the commissioners. This is another wonderful project along the lines, the, uh, the park that's coming up in Northwest. This, this park is, uh, located all the way to our side.
This is from your ARPA funds that were designated to you for the parks and stuff, yes.
Correct.
My ARPA funds.
Your ARPA funds?
So this is a project all the way to the south in Bishop, so, uh.
That was weird.
Don't move.
We have a motion. I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? All those, uh, ten, item number ten. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign.
I'm happy to let you use your ARPA funds that way, Commissioner.
The motion passes.
Excuse me, Judge?
Didn't you let me?
Yes, go ahead.
What, what were the changes on number eight?
On number eight, Commissioner just wanted to clarify that the concessionaire was going to go out for an RFP. And Scott Cross with the Parks Board did state that in his comments. I think he's already run out the door. But they have to do that as well. That's part of their requirements and.
They're special. They don't have to do that, but they can do that.
They've done, that's the way they did it before. I was told that's the way, and they do do it, yes, uh-huh, so. Uh, we were told by two different, Troy Adler and Scott Cross in my conversations, that that is what they're doing. That there is no contract. It will be open to the public. Everyone will have the opportunity to rebid on that concessionaire.
If that's the case, let's make it an even.
If that's the case, let's make it an even five.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, discuss and consider approval for Invitation For Bid Sunrise Pond Nature. And go ahead, you are still there.
So, so Judge, this is another good park project, this is actually adjacent to our library, so it actually enhances the library, and enhances the, their school, uh, teaching classes. You've seen what they've done with what they're, they've been given, so they've, they've got a wonderful program. This enhances it, this is located in Robstown, and yes, it's also with the ARPA funding. Commissioner, um, Modis has shepherded this through, I mean, he's been cracking the whip, so to speak.
Is this through your ARPA allocation, or is this, Commissioner? I think I put a little bit in there too, as well, on that one, so, yes, yes. And countywide, okay. Motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Uh, moving on to item twelve, discuss and consider the fire marshal vehicle and any related matters. I think we have held on to this fire marshal vehicle and some of the equipment in. We have, um, a lease on that vehicle for sixty months. Trying to see my notes here, the equipment in it and things, we can either keep it and assign it to a different department, or we can turn the lease in, but we've had it for how long, Teresa?
Since twenty.
Since?
Two thousand twenty.
Two thousand twenty, we are already into twenty-four, so, um, do we want to turn it in? Is, Michael Robinson is back there, and I, um, talked to him earlier. I didn't realize, in all of our discussions in the past, this has normally been a chore, or decided through the purchasing office.
Yes, typically, anytime a department has a vehicle that they no longer have a use for, they'll return that to the purchasing department. We will then seek out, uh, an alternate place for that asset to continue to get use. Uh, if we have multiple departments that all want that same item, I like to put those two department heads together, and let them kinda work it out amongst themselves as to who they feel is most worthy to receive that item. Um, and then they'll come back to me with, uh, what they mutually decided, and then we just, uh, transfer the vehicle over. It never requires a court action for these type of transfers.
I wish I would've known that a long time ago, I just was aware of this today, was when I learned it, yes.
I believe, uh, also for memory, uh, serving me correctly, there was a lot going on with the Fire Marshal Office.
Yes.
And so, uh, I think from my standpoint, I wanted to let the court weigh in on any preferences they have. Uh, I certainly will consider that, um, on where this goes.
Well, I know, we've had lots of requests, and I would suggest that you talk to JJ as well, cuz I know he does lots of traveling for the county, and I think he was up for the next vehicle, and he possibly could use one, but, uh, I think that's your department, and we need to let you handle it, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, if, if any.
So what's the?
Who are the departments that, that have questioned?
I've heard through the grapevine that, uh, some of the constable offices have expressed an interest in this vehicle, cuz it is, it's a squad car, basically, that anyone would be happy to have. Uh, it's in great condition.
Yes, I would.
Including the Sheriff's Office. And so, uh, I guess I would say, any interested parties, please send me a communication as soon as possible.
So that we don't get into a fight, do we just sell the thing and move on? I, I, you know, I don't.
That's his fight, not ours.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my fight, um.
So we're designating Michael to make the decision on this?
No, I'm already designated, I already do this.
He is already designated, we shouldn't have been dealing with, we should've given it to him a long time ago. Yeah.
So.
So the statute says, what, tell me again, that a vehicle that becomes available, purchasing just disseminates it as needed?
Yeah, I'm the, I'm the asset manager for the county, so I'm responsible for all the assets. So anytime, like, someone has a desk that they don't need, they turn it into me, I find a new home for that desk. I don't come into court to get a permission of where I'm gonna place that desk. And we've published, uh, memos in the past advising department heads, specifically the courts, if there's an outgoing, uh, person due to an election change, that they cannot transfer any of their assets to another department directly. They have to turn in any unneeded assets to purchasing, and then we'll find a suitable replacement.
What do we do with all those guns that the Fire Marshal had? Is that the same thing?
The sheriff is holding them for us, yes, he's the only lawful person that, who was that.
Okay, if that's the law, then I don't need to be, get in any fights I don't need to get into, so.
Exactly.
And there's a, the law does provide for, um, when we, if we ever have a tie, like, two people bid the same exact number, uh, they, uh, the way it's settled is through the drawing of lots, and that's what's specified in the law. So if I have, you know, three or four folks that all want this equally, and none are willing to give, then we'll have to resort to drawing lots at that point.
Please give us a heads up, in case this is, I'm sure that, that this one nice vehicle is gonna draw a lot of attention, and there's maybe some, I wanna say hurt feelings, but some that feel that they deserved it more than others, so just keep us updated if this does become a, a problem, just so we know. We might start getting calls, or just internally, obviously, so.
Certainly, yeah.
Excuse me, Mike?
I'm certain we'll hear about it.
Were you taking into consideration departments that need a vehicle, that their vehicles are miles way over the limit?
Yes, that's usually the first consideration, is we see, uh, the condition of each, um, I guess, person who's seeking to have the vehicle. We'll evaluate each of their fleets and determine who's in the position of most need.
Or who was next on your list when we cut off the vehicle purchases because of the budget, things like that, yes.
That's a different vehicle that we don't normally have to deal with, but, so, there were vehicles that were, we were expecting to come in, and we weren't able to receive them due to the, uh, backlogs after the pandemic in terms of manufacturing. And so I'll have to weigh all of those factors in making that decision.
Good luck.
I've had some calls also about some vehicles from constable's offices, and their vehicles are way over the, the limit they're supposed to have, and that could pose a danger also as well to the, to the driver, whoever it might be, and, uh, you know, if you could take that into consideration.
Right, and, uh, the, the court made a decision last year not to, uh, do another fleet,
I understand.
Based on the budgetary constraints that we had.
I understand.
And so, those vehicles do continue to get older, and so I won't be surprised if.
But what I'm saying is, we got one vehicle, it could probably help one department that really needs.
Yeah, whoever gets it will be helped, definitely. Certainly agree, thank you.
Thank you. So, we have no motion, no action on that, it's not ours to discuss, thank you. Um, item number fifteen, discuss and consider upcoming Commissioners Court meeting dates. Does anyone have any conflicts or problems want to address on the court dates? Other than I was made aware yesterday, I think all of our dates are like the day after election days, or something even in the future. It's kinda hard for our candidates to set up, we didn't, nobody looked into that, nobody did it intentionally. It's one we failed to go by. And then, moving on, I'll move on to item B one. Uh, discuss and consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the Oasis County Sheriff's Office and the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement State of Texas Agency for Providing School Marshall Recertification Training. And this is funded by the Sheriff's Community Project Funds, and do you wanna speak about this, Sheriff, while you're here? Thank you for being here, by the way.
So, Judge and Commissioners, this is the second MOU. The, the first one was approved by the court back in October of last year. And basically, what it does, it creates, it codifies a relationship between us and TECOL, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Education, that makes the Oasis County Sheriff's Office Training Division one of only four training, um, units in the whole state of Texas that is authorized to teach these school marshal programs. So, the one that was approved back in October created our ability to teach the eighty-hour original school marshal training class. So we have twenty-two school districts in Oasis County, and all of them are tasked with creating a school safety and security model that fits them. And some of the school districts opt to have their own police department, and some of them opt to use school marshals or other processes to keep their, their students safe. So what we're doing with this, at, at no cost to the school districts, because it is all funded, it is one of those funded mandates, we're offering them the ability to send people to us and get them trained up to be a school marshal for their particular ISD. And that, that occurred back in October. Now, the school marshal program requires recertification every three years. So the MOU that y'all are looking at today will authorize us, and with TECOL, to also teach that sixteen-hour recertification class. And that'll probably be the first class that we put together, because there are all, are already numerous school marshals at the different ISDs that are coming up to be recertified. They, they receive their original training elsewhere, often out of state. And so, we, we already have a roster lined up for our first recertification, uh, class or session, and many of the, the school marshals are coming to us from out of state. I mean, it's, it's, it's very high demand, or at least not, not so much out of state, because it's a Texas thing. But throughout the state of Texas, they're coming here. And it's all reimbursed. The eighty-hour course has reimbursed twenty thousand dollars per session, and this recertification, this eighteen-hour course that y'all are looking at today will, will be reimbursed six thousand dollars per session. So no cost to the county.
Is this, um, is this administered by your training division, or, okay?
So, Captain Milton Rivetta is the coordinator, and we'll use our officers, our trained, uh, instructors, and we can also bring in adjunct instructors from other agencies if, if the need is there for additional help.
So only, you said only four in the state?
Yeah, only four in the whole state, Oasis County is one of them. We, we saw the need here. And initially, the need appeared to be the Corpus Christi Independent School District, the big one, right? But then they backed away from it. But we had already put the wheels in motion to get certified and create this MOU with TECOL, so we, we hung on to it. Because it will benefit, uh, many of the other school districts in Oasis County who choose to have the school marshal element in their school safety and security plan.
And, and so they're coming also from outside the region, not just Oasis County?
Absolutely.
Wow.
That's great, that's good to hear.
Great program, great. Um, I will make a motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. All those, any other discussion?
And we could use that truck in the training.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you, Sheriff. Um, moving on to item C one, discuss and consider approval of a contract amended by Coastal Bend Council of Governments Area Agency regarding the meals program and rate negotiation workbook, and I believe one and two had to be separated or something.
Well, they can be put together, essentially, the first one is the actual book, so we do that every year. The second one is extending the contract from twenty-four to all the way to twenty-seven. So we won't see that one until probably around sometime at twenty-eight, or twenty-seven going into twenty-eight.
The workbook is first, so, I'll make the motion to pass on approval of the workbook.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is something new, when's the last time you did the workbook?
We did it last year.
It's done every year, every year, cuz the numbers change or something?
Well, what we do is, based on the CPI and the evaluation of how much everything's costing.
Cost, yes. And we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Now then, my question would be, if you have to do the workbook every year, how can we do this one for multiple years?
So essentially, it does not tie you to a number, it ties you just to.
Who's providing it?
Who's providing it, what we're supposed to be doing, and.
Requirements and stipulations, things.
And you'll probably see amendments going through time regarding the workbook if we, as we go through. So it's.
And why did you ask for till twenty twenty-seven?
Uh, that's not us, that's coming from the Cog.
Okay, okay. I'll make the motion to pass, then.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you very much. Um, Public Works, D one, receive an update on the road improvements of Rabbit Run Drive and Coyote Trail. And this is just an update, so.
Judge, I asked them to put it on, because they really did a great job on Rabbit Run, and I wanted to highlight the great work that the Public Works did on this, and so, and I know they added Coyote Trail, um, as well, but, uh, you know, oftentimes, our employees don't get, you know, we, we need to, you know, recognize more of them, but they did a phenomenal job, Juan, and I just wanted to tell you all that in public, in front of the world. Uh, and I'm super happy, I've driven out there and looked at it, and I've seen the pictures you've sent. So I, I, I want you to talk about it, but I just wanted to, to jump in and say, thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate the hard work and the great work.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think, Connie, we put a few photos that we submitted, no? Yes, ma'am. Uh, there's, there's a few photos, um, that we, that we presented, Commissioner. Uh, the project took about three to four weeks. Um, I have Richard DeLuna, the lead foreman, and Linda Garcia, the, the foreman for, uh, four yard, that were working on this project, and, and you're correct, Commissioner, they, they did a great job, him there and their staff, uh, in getting this project completed in a timely manner. Uh, again, three to four weeks to get a, about a half a mile road reconstructed. I'm gonna go to the next photo. Uh, this is, uh, kinda just getting the finished product of, of the road, and, uh, it's pretty much a brand-new base, and, uh, two cores of surface treatment on it, Commissioner, you wanna go to the next one? Um, and, and it was completed, again, Commissioner, within three to four weeks. And I brought Richard here, like I said, the lead foreman, and Linda that worked on the project, and, and they did a great job, Commissioner, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I have a question on this, just a general question, and it may need for a future, uh, item on the agenda, but you, you did this basically in-house?
Yes, sir, it's all, it's all in-house.
And, and so, an estimate, you're an engineer, you can give us a general estimate, what, what it costs if we put it out, out on the street? I mean, how much did we save doing it this way?
Uh, you're looking about three hundred thousand to half a million, Commissioner.
Savings?
Savings. That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
I mean, this, this, I mean, within reason, right? I mean, we know we gotta build up staff, pay, you know, the pay scale needs to increase, and we've gotten a lot of great new equipment, but, I mean, we, we may not be able to do this all the time. But I, I remember, cuz I just think back of the conversation I had with your predecessor before, when I first came on court, cuz I came on just maybe a couple of years before you came to Oasis County. And I remember always hearing, you know, let us bid out the project, and it always seemed, the way it was bid, it was, at the time, seemed cheaper to go the, uh, the, 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 the private route and, and have somebody else bid out. At least that's how it would be presented to me.
Yes, sir.
But now that we're at this point where you can do this kind of work, one, it's saving money.
Yes, sir.
Two, it's showing the quality of work and the workers that you have, and that, three, that savings could be turned around and sa, and put into other projects, or to say, hey, we're saving money, then let's use that money at the end of the year to justify maybe pay raises, uh, for the staff to keep them here. So I think it kinda serves all three of those purposes, and probably more. But, uh, that's, I figured we had a savings, but to say anywhere between that much is, is, that's an eye-opener, it's, it's, that's great news.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yeah, and one thing that I did wanna mention, Commissioner, and I think, I think the school buses on this road didn't wanna use, take the route anymore, cuz it was in that, you know, bad a condition.
Yeah, and we've got another one like that, but we've got some problems we gotta fix over there before, they got some issues with who owns the road and that kinda thing, but that, that's what we're trying to do, and y'all, y'all really did a great job, and, um, so, thank you all very much, and.
Thank you.
You bet.
Juan, I just wanna add, thank you very much, Richard, Linda, uh, you guys have always been, not to work, you, Juan, you get out from the back of your desk, and you go work with your crew, cuz I've seen you there, okay? And that's what I appreciate about your crew and you, that you, you know, you just don't dictate from the back of your desk, you go out there and really work with them. And I sure miss Jerry Garcia, he was a good guy. So thank you guys for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, and sorry I had to step out a second, but thank you, I've heard excellent compliment, comments about the job out there, so thank you.
I didn't even get to go to the next item, Judge.
Yes, yes, I'm back just in time. Five seconds, you got it. Moving on to item number two, discuss and consider approval of certificate of substantial completion for Hazel Bazemore. I was out there yesterday, it looks awesome.
Yes, ma'am, we recommend, we're recommending the, uh, the certificate of substantial completion, sorry, for, for the project, so we're recommending.
Yes.
I just wanna add, Juan, thank you very much for all you've done, for all your help, I mean, you guided me, you know, I've said, I'm not an engineer, I didn't depend on you for guidance, and so, you've done a great job, so thank you again, I appreciate you.
Is that your motion to approve? Is that your motion to approve? We have a motion, I guess, Commissioner Hernandez, and a second from Commissioner Mottis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item number three, discuss and consider approval of a deductive change order number two. That means that you came under budget two thousand. Yes, very good for the Public Defender's Office, the sixth-floor renovation.
Recommending approval.
Well, we are certainly not going to turn that down. I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion. I was a second. Yes, yes, thank you. Item number four, discuss and consider approval of certificate of substantial completion for the Public Defender's Office, sixth-floor renovations.
We're recommending approval, Dawson, on the substantial completion letter. Public Works is recommending.
Yes, and what is the date? What is the final completion? When are they moving in?
Judge, I think that by the end of this week, everything should be fully completed.
Wow. And they'll start moving soon.
Yes, ma'am. They were just waiting on the doors, and, but by this week, everything should be...
They should have those in too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I recommend approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number five, discuss and consider authorizing and approving the method of procurement for the Oasis County Courthouse and Jail wastewater line replacement project. And those are funded with ARPA funds. We set aside this money for a while, so I would recommend authorizing the purchasing agent to go out for bids on this, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that money is ARPA, four million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-five is the amount that's allocated for that. Item number six, I will let Commissioner Gonzalez speak first, but I spoke to him and asked him to possibly table this and for a couple of months till we get the bids back. So, but did...
I don't know, a couple of months, but...
When do we get the...
How long is the bids going out? How long is it going to take?
The bids will come out for you.
For this project, Commissioner, you're lucky.
No, for the other two. I want to table it until the courthouse roof comes in and we see...
Michael?
I think we're requesting thirty to forty, thirty days.
That's what I said, the end of...
So, when did it go out and when will it, when's the deadline?
On the Michael.
Yeah, I mean, let's get, yeah.
Clear information because I want to make sure.
I would think anyone could...
Okay, it's not out yet. I need the plans and specs when I get those. I already have permission to bid, so I'm ready to go. Already have my framework ready.
When do you anticipate that going out?
As soon as I get the plans and specs.
I think it'll be...
Should we just table it to the date that we bring it back to court to consider the other one, whatever that is?
The other one doesn't have to get reconsidered. I just, I received the plans and specs from Juan. We'll put together the advertisement, and we have to give the caller times about three to four days' notice.
When we bring it back to vote on the...
When will you get the bids back?
And then, I think we said we're going to leave this for thirty days. So, it's going to be like a month and a half, depending on when the court falls.
The first week, first of April.
First, we'll push it to the first week of April, and if we need to push it again, we will.
Put it back on when this one comes back, whenever you can put this...
Yeah, because I just wanted to see what, to me, I wanted to see what the bids on both of them would be because...
Yeah, so when I come back to give you guys the bid results, that'd be a good time to have it on.
So, then, I would ask if you would table it till this comes back with the bid proposals.
Fourth meeting of April.
Yes.
That should be safe, right? Michael, first weekend in April, first meeting in April?
Should be safe.
I second that motion.
So, we have a motion and a second to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, discuss and consider approval of request by the Department of Public Works to allocate one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents of right-of-way funds to cover the shortage of mowing equipment that, your equipment in the ARPA funds, the price went up apparently when you went to purchase them.
Yes, ma'am. During the timeframe of the past two years, it's gone up, and some of our other equipment that we bought with our ARPA monies. And we're requesting that we can use the right-of-way monies that are still...
There's nine hundred and five thousand dollars in the current available funds. We still have...
And we have to set that aside for...
Possible...
Right-of-way acquisitions and stuff like that would take, and we think not taking it from them, that's not going to hurt us?
Yes, sir. I did get an email last week, and I should have brought it to court.
The balance after we take this out, that we would leave and not want to touch and let that amount grow again, is four hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seven dollars.
Wait, it says available balance is nine oh five, and you're asking...
We owe on one other pending payment, and then, these funds coming out of there would make it four hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. Teresa looked it up for us because I wanted to make sure, make sure we were all aware.
And that keeps us hold for what we know we think is coming for some of this right-of-way acquisition or something?
We don't ever know. They kind of just give it to us.
And Judge, Commissioner, I did receive an email last week from Tex-Stop, from Gustavo, for the right-of-way, and I did request from him if there was going to be any request from here till the end of the year, which is our fiscal year, our VAGAs. And he said they're not, they're not going to be requesting any additional right-of-way monies from us.
So, and then, we put some in each year in our budget? Is that what we do?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, that's what I needed to know. You've already checked with him, and he doesn't think anything's coming, Teresa?
Well, there's a pending project that's still ongoing, US seventy-seven. US seventy-seven, south of County Road twenty-eight to County Road sixteen. They're not complete. They should have constructions and utilities ongoing. So, right now, we have an estimate that they were going to request payment on of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, six fifty-nine.
Which is what she's accounting for in her conversation.
Yeah, we backed it out of the total. And plus, we don't know what additional amount. So, the four forty-nine that's going to remain, we need to kind of keep that whole.
Right. So, we should be okay as far as we know.
We're okay with this, just don't spend any more.
Right.
Yes.
That's correct.
So, do we have a motion to approve?
So, move.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate it.
Moving on to E, purchasing. This, item number one, discuss and consider conditional selection of job-order contracting services for general construction and multi-trades. And I am to understand, this is step two of the process. It creates a pool of general contractors for Public Works Inland Parks and Coastal Parks to use.
That is correct.
Yes. So, I would make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number two...
Hold on, Michael, this, when is this, when is this, like, it's...
So, what's happened now is we've conditionally selected the contractors. I'll come back to the court with the contracts, to approve the contracts. Once those contracts have been approved, the folks from Gordian have offered to come in, and they're going to have some meetings with Juan, Edward, and Scott to show them how to utilize the process on future projects. And what I may do is see if I can get some time with the court, if y'all, if y'all would like, to have them give the court a briefing of how that process works. Because there are going to be several projects that each of you may have in the future that you may want to utilize this program. I think it'd be good to have an understanding of how it works.
Kind of like our master service agreements on the other projects that we use.
They'd be the ones actually subcontracting the subs.
Yes.
So, that's already happened, or they already had that meeting, or that's going to happen?
No, no. We had two meetings to inform potential bidders about how that works. And then, we got the bids in, and we've selected these folks to be conditionally selected.
Contracted.
We'll contract with them, and then, we'll have the training for the county staff so we know how to use the program. Because there's a software program that Gordian has that has the RS Means catalog for all the individual tasks that someone might do on a repair project. If it was like to repaint this room by square feet, it says how many hours that job should take. And then, they have a factor that each of the contractors had bid, and they'll use that factor to come up with a cost for that project. And then, you can, you or the Public Works or Inland and Coastal Parks can come back to the court and recommend that project for approval. It works very similar to a co-op. It's just on a very local level with just us. We're the, we're the members of this little small job program. And so, we can utilize any of the contractors on there, and they can subcontract with whoever they like. So, it gives you guys some more flexibility on who you choose to use, gives our local contractors a lot more ability to participate in those programs beyond that fifty thousand limit that they get caught up in before.
And how many contractors do we have?
We're going to have fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah, so they'll have a wide array of folks.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, yes.
Did we vote on that? I know we had a motion and a second. Did we vote?
Yes.
We're good. Okay, sorry. Item number three, discuss and consider conditional selection of DLF for Texas Hilltop Community Center renovations and related matters.
And, excuse...
Number two.
You have number two.
Oh, excuse me. Item number two, discuss and consider conditional selection for Public Health Services.
And this is one, if I could ask the court to discuss the RFP and the response to this in executive before you take a vote, I have some questions for the court. Yes.
Do you have questions on two?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me add it. E2. Now, then I was correct.
Yes.
Moving on to item number three, discuss and consider conditional selection of DLF Texas for Hilltop Community Center renovations and related matters.
And so, the low bidder was DLF Texas for the base bid. And both the county engineer and Richter architects are recommending that we conditionally select DLF Texas and that we enter into the process of value engineering to see if we can cut some costs on this.
That's a lot of cost on this one that's concerning.
Yeah, that's one. Speak to that one.
That's a million five.
Yeah.
Plus another nine seventy-five. That's two point four.
I think it's a total of about a million, Commissioner, that we got to reduce the cost.
About one point four oh two sixty-five. Yeah, okay. It's like a million and a half, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So, we're recommending if we can conditionally award it and then do a, what do you call it, a value engineering?
Value engineering? They can cut that much off with value engineering?
We can try and see what we can do.
A million four?
Yeah.
We're going to, we're going to try, Commissioner.
And what's the, and what's the alternate for? Nine seventy-five, seven eighty-nine?
I don't know, what was it?
Obviously, you're not going to...
You're not going to be able to...
You're not going to do that one?
No, no.
So, when are we going to have discussions with this?
Right after y'all approve the conditional award. Then, we can have the architect coordinate with the contractor.
Okay.
What is the alternate projects? What are they, what are you taking off right of way?
On the...
Because that's an additional nine hundred and seventy-five.
So, you're not going to try to do anything with the alternate? Or I'm confused on what you're trying to value.
Totally none.
The value engineering, Commissioners, we look at, kind of we did with the medical examiner.
No, no, I mean, are you going to try to value engineer to where you get the alternate in too?
No, no, no. Just get it within the base bid.
So, the base bid, which is ten eight, and you've got nine four as a budget, so you've got to cut a million four out of it.
We're going to try, Commissioner.
So, all we can do is try. So, all we can do is try.
Yes, sir.
Do they, now, do you have to go back out for bids?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
That's correct.
And I know what David Richter would say, Commissioner Hernandez, but like, would it be, I'm just throwing it out there, and I'm not, I'm, I'll, if you want to give it a try, we'll give it a try, but I'm just throwing it out there. For nine point four million, I would think you could build a whole...
Only building? No. Look, this building, you said it yourself, has good bones, okay?
Do what?
You went and inspected the building yourself.
Yeah.
And you said it was in good shape, okay? How much is it going to cost us to demolish that building?
It's just, you don't want to. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm just worried about getting the money. That's all I'm trying.
I'd rather...
I want you to have something out there. I just, for nine point four million, if you knock that down, you could build a Taj Mahal back in place of it. But if that's not the direction you want to go, okay, I'm just throwing ideas out. I, we're committed to these funds. I'm not backing out of that commitment, but I'm just looking at outside the box because it's an old building. I'm not backing out of that commitment, but I'm just looking at outside the box, cause it's an old building. It, it's.
It is an old building, but it's a good structure building.
No, it is. And I know.
It served us well. There's a lot of people there in the area that want it to stay up. It's got a lot of history in it. And I, I mean, I mean, really, to be truthful, I mean, I've lost a lot of ARPA funds, okay?
I'm not, I'm not taking any funds. I'm just throwing out another idea.
But, you know, I could have had money. I could have had money to throw more money into it, but.
Well, you can't mix the ARPA with, you have to be careful how you do that. But anyway, I, I'm just throwing out an idea. If you wanna stay with this route, that's fine. I just.
Let's see what we can work out, okay?
But maybe just think about that in case they can't work it out, cause I still think you could get a heck of a building out there for a brand new building. For nine million bucks, you could build a lot, like, but.
My suggestion this morning too, it's funny. It was like, I was like, we, this is a lot of money to drop off a bid, but go get after it if you can. Um, if not, I think then we need to reconsider and possibly do something else.
Two other commissioners before me invested, or one of them did, invested almost two, or two million dollars there. And I don't see any difference in it, okay?
Yeah.
So, I mean, Juan, let's give it a try, okay? Let's see what we can do. I think we can.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, you, this is only, the motion is only to allow you to go back. If you don't get it under what we have it, have to have it at the nine million, then, then we have to bring it back. And then I think that's when we would maybe discuss other opportunities or whether we continue with that building plan or scrap it and start over. So I would make the motion to move forward with that if you can get the money underneath. Yeah.
And you're just, and you're gonna bring it back and tell us what you got on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, it's just an idea. If you don't wanna do it, that's great. But boy, you could build a phenomenal new thing out there for nine point four million.
And this, this is based on the, um, the improvements to the design that Richter.
Yes.
Created.
That's correct.
That's been before us.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Before the court several times, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
Did you second that, Commissioner?
I'll second.
Or who did?
I'll vote for it.
Yeah, okay. Um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Good luck, and we will probably see you again, cause I'll be shocked if you get that much off of the bid. It would be amazing. We're gonna have you on all of them.
It's still a good building, Judge. It's still a good building. It's gone through a lot of hurricanes and it's still here.
Absolutely, absolutely. I live out in that area, go by there all the time. Item number four, discuss and consider authorizing and approving a method of procurement. What is that sound? For multi-systemic therapy family preservation program servicing and, and authorizing the purchasing agent. And this is from the Juvenile, um, authorizing you to adopt, adopt an order delegating evaluation authority to a selection committee. That's a lot of stuff here in there. That was a big one. You wanna explain that?
It's a big mouthful, but this is a, a multi-systemic therapy family preservation program that the Juvenile Department's had in place for many, many years. Um, and it's just due to be rebid. And so, and so that's what we're asking for.
Easier than this? Yes. And it comes out of their budgeted funds, so yes.
Right.
Perfect. So we have a motion from, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Now, moving on to the auditor, um, item F one. Thank you, Michael. Approved budget change order number two for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Lisa, you are in the seat today.
Yes, ma'am, I am. Thank you, Judge. Um, I respectfully submit budget change order number two for Commissioners Court review and approval. They're requesting to reallocate budgeted funding from, uh, building superintendent to, uh, capital outlay in order to fund a piece of equipment that they're wanting to purchase.
Is this on top of the money we just gave them? Is that to help with that piece of equipment? Is this a different piece of equipment?
Different piece of equipment. It's a mower bad boy.
Okay.
I didn't name it. It's for grounds maintenance at the Calderon Building.
And that is, well, you need a mower for grounds maintenance, so I would assume, yes. I will make the motion to pass, yes. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number two, approve project budget amendment number zero zero one.
I respectfully submit budget change order amendment, um, number zero zero one. We have restarted the numbering sequence with Workday. Um, the projects are, what were formerly called project, capital project change orders are now project budget amendments in Workday. Um, whenever we converted over, um, we moved everything that was, that still had available funding in the capital project funds from one solution over to Workday. I've worked very closely with Ms. Teresa and we have both gone through, reviewed all the projects. Um, any projects that didn't have available funding in one solution at the time that we pulled it over, which was December thirty-first, they were, there wasn't a balance to move over. If additional funding is needed at some point in time to complete a project, um, because you determined that, that something hadn't finished that you thought had finished, we can always add that project right back into Workday and be able to move forward.
So this is actually a better record of keeping our, um, COs and different funding sources with the project where we know how much we've allocated and not. We can pull this up very quickly to utilize that.
Yes. So I attached for your reference what the change order would have been had I prepared it in the old system. Um, that's, uh, for your record, so that you could see, okay, this is how we did it before. And then I attached what I'm anticipating the tentative report will look like in Workday as that's getting built out. As you can see, the projects are now, um, if you look at, go to page three of the Workday, as you can see, the projects are now grouped together. So all of the funding sources for a given project are displayed. And the, so instead of it being by funding source and there being a separate project in each funding source, it's, there's a separate funding source in each project. So you'll be able to look at any project at any given time without having to use a calculator and know how much budget you have allocated to that project. You'll also be able to identify via funding sources where those funds, the funding source, uh, yeah, where it came from.
If there's any left, where it came from.
If, if there's any left. Also, all of your, on the last page of that same report is all of your unallocated funds. Eventually, this report will also include your unallocated RTA funds as well as your unallocated, um, diabetes funding. Your unala, your, any unallocated, I'm trying to think of, um, the Hurricane Harvey settlements. If you had any funding left over from that that was awarded whenever we allocated that out, that would be here. All project funding will be shown within that project so that you'll know the true cost of a project at any given moment. And again, as new funding is awarded, we'll do a change order like this the following court in order to allocate that funding out. Does anybody have any questions regarding the new format?
So how long is it gonna be before we can do all that?
The new, the new format's there. It's just right now I'm generating it myself instead of pressing a button and the computer generating it for me.
Well, so I'm asking to, what, how long is it gonna be before we can do that? And pull out, pull it out and see where we're at with that project. So every, but sometimes every time we do something, it doesn't work, you know? So we gotta go back to you guys and, and ask.
Um, how long it would be till that report is written kinda might have something to do with the next item on the agenda. Um, we're working to get those reports created as quickly as possible. We're also, in any software conversion, there are issues. And we're experiencing some of those issues and we're trying to address those as quickly and timely as possible. Um, some issues take higher priority than others. Um, I, we do have the available balances. Um, I have a list of, of budget per project. I'm maintaining that list. We're gonna have similar change orders that will, going forward, be available for ARPA. So all of the ARPA items where funding was reallocated today, there'll be a similar change order to this project change order to where you'll be able to see what, what your balances are in ARPA at any moment in time. And again, your budget balances only change whenever Commissioners Court takes action.
Bless you.
Or, or you spend funding. Um, it's, we have the project to actual report, I believe, built out. I need to do a little bit more testing, but I believe that that is up and running or at least it will be in the next week, week and a half.
Commissioner, um, we're also working on reports that's gonna show the individual amounts, the projects per court member as well.
On the last page, you'll be able to see your unallocated. And again, all of the projects have all of the budgets with their funding sources.
Well, there's no one's asking, cause I'm in.
Do you anticipate, what is the time you anticipate this being available?
Yeah, I mean, you know, here we're having a hard time just transferring fifty thousand dollars from, from one place to another with the RV mobile and we can't even do that. So I'm just saying, how long is that gonna take?
The, the cost center for the mobile project has been created. Um, I don't know if Harry emailed you that it's been created, but it has been created. Um, again, that's an internal budget change order. That'll be done right away.
All right. I just, I don't see nothing happening.
We're gonna trust you, so. I have a motion to pass. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Now, item three, discuss and consider authorizing and approving for framework services agreement amendment number one.
That's doing it unlike.
Yeah, this is the one that's gonna, that we're having to do additional.
So this is a, I'm trying to remember how, um, Mr. Brown said it. He is calling it a framework service agreement amendment number one to incorporate a statement of work number two. Um, the original statement of work, different portions of that statement of work had different ending times. The original implementation ending, ending time for the main work for ALI, for the conversion is, was scheduled to end on February sixteenth. We have received a, at no cost to the county, two-week extension to work on some of the issues that we're having ongoing. Um, this would provide hours for us to be able to have additional reports built out through ALI. We are also, the team that we've been working with is not, is, would not go forward to this next phase. So if we were to change third-party implementers, now would be the time to do it. Um, we are looking at another third-party implementer for full disclosure. Um, that could potentially replace this contract. Um, we're working with them closely. We're trying to find where we can get any savings available to help, since we're gonna have to start with a new team either way.
Does this have a cost on there? I don't see that.
This cost, it, we actually already have savings in our existing contract that could pay for this extension. Um, it is fifty thousand for, oh gosh, where did it go? It was.
It just says fifty thousand.
I don't see it in this recommendation from right here, of course.
Oh, hold on.
It's in the physical impact. It's not in the recommendation.
It's on page three, the fees. Um, it's two hundred and fifty annual hours at, um, two hundred and five dollars per hour. Then we're getting a discount to where we'll get all two hundred and fifty hours for fifty thousand.
But shouldn't, shouldn't that already be in, I mean, we, we paid them a lot, I mean, a lot of money. I mean, shouldn't that already be incorporated in the whole thing? You know, it seems like every time we hit a snag, we gotta pay for taking care of the snag, you know, so.
That's correct. Um, in the original contract, it stated that anything outside the statement of work, the initial statement of work, would be a change order. Um, there's going to be another change order for ALI, for a integration with the state of Texas. That'll be on the next Commissioners Court as well.
How much is that gonna be?
Um, I think it was ten thousand two fifty. It's currently at the county attorney's office for approval.
You said we have savings in our existing things.
There's exist, there's existing, excuse me, funding available. It's approximately a hundred thousand.
That we haven't used in this transition that we already allocated towards this process.
That's already set up in a PO. We're just letting, we're, for full disclosure, letting Commissioners Court know that there was savings from the project. We didn't have as many consultants on site due to the holidays. And so there were savings available.
Well, for those two, they're not gonna have very much left.
Right. That's correct, sir. I understand that. And again, like I said, we're looking at potentially changing third-party implementers at this time, because it would be a new team that we're starting with either way.
I don't know why we'd do that.
Are you okay with going forward then, or do you wanna do?
I ain't got no choice. I don't think we do it.
I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Um, did Commissioner Chesney, did, we had one thing that we, on one of your appointments to the BMAC Board, did you have any changes?
Yes, Judge, I'd like to, um, put forth John Brant.
John Brant? That is on item, it's at the very beginning, everyone. Item H two, or H one, sorry, H one. John Brant.
Yes, I don't know any of these applicants, but that came from a, uh, recommendation from the current BMAC chair who I have great respect for, so I would like to put forth that name.
Okay. Uh, we'll second that motion. Is there any other discussion? And that is for the other position, that is a temporary position expiring December twenty twenty-four.
That's correct.
Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Judge, I'd like to vote, the court would allow to vote in favor of all the consent agenda items. I was out doing an interview and just like to vote in favor.
Yes, sorry. Yes, by all means.
There were two that y'all were taking back to commi, to executive session?
Yeah, excluding the two members. Yes. Seven and eight, yes. Now, um, I, um, have to bring up item four D from executive. Before we go into executive, I need a unanimous vote, um, that.
Sorry.
Sorry.
You said D?
D, um, consult with the county attorney regarding Barisi Village and take action. Um, I, that negotiating in the public would be detrimental to the county's position. So I need a motion and a second. It has to be in a unanimous vote, five oh. I'll second that motion.
Okay, but what is?
Just taking it into executive. We have to have a motion on four D that we can take it into there.
Four D? What's four D?
Not knowing what we're doing on this one, I'm happy to do it to accommodate your request, but I have no idea why we're going back there.
I don't either.
This is from Jenny, so we're doing it at the advice of our attorney. Yes, four D.
It's executive session D.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, so we can take it into executive. Then that means I am ready to go, um, to read all the executive. Uh, we are going to executive session. Public notices, given that Commissioners Court may elect to go into an executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provision of the Open Meetings Act, chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there has been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that, um, practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda items in the executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event the Commissioners Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, five five one dot zero seven two, five five one dot zero seven three, five five one dot zero seven four, five five one dot zero seven four five, five five one dot zero seven six, five five one dot zero eight six, five five one dot zero eight seven. The Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. Um, item A today is consult with the county attorney and outside counsel on legal matters relating to cause number twenty twenty-two, CCV six one three three seven dash four, Maria Kristoff, and Oasis County, in Oasis County Court at Law, number four, related matters, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Discuss, consider, and take action in regular session if needed. Item B, consult with the county attorney on Corpus Christi Palmer's tax abatement agreement and take action in open session, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Item C, consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to property damage, claim demand of Isidro Pimentel, and all related matters, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Discuss and consider and take action in regular session. Item D, consult with the county attorney regarding Barisi Village and take action in same open session if necessary, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven two five. And item E, discuss and consider appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of Oasis County-appointed department heads, information techno, today we're doing information technology and the Outreach Wellness Clinic, uh, scheduled by the Commissioners Court, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven four. Whereas I like to state that that wording is what we are required to put. Um, it sounds a little harsh, but we are just doing evaluations. We are also bringing in consent agenda item D, number seven and eight. And that would be five five one dot zero seven one on the payments, right? And then item three E two, what we just went through. Let me find that one again. Discuss and consider conditional selection for public health services. And that would be five five one dot zero seven one as well. And so it is eleven fifty-six and we are adjourned for executive session. Thank you. Are we on, Connie?
You're ready to go.
It is three twenty-one and we are coming back from executive session. The first item I'll bring up is item A. And I will make the motion to approve the settlement in twenty twenty-two, CCV six one three three seven dash four. Upon the execution of full release and settlement documents by the plaintiffs in the suit, the settlement shall include paying the thirty-two plaintiffs a total of three hundred thousand plus up to six thousand in court cost. Settlement funds are to be dispersed no later than forty-five days after the execution of this agreement. Authorize the county auditor and the county clerk to release funds and expedite the payment. That is my motion, and I will be, I will be issuing a statement at a later date. We have a second, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item, consent item D, seven and eight.
How about D on, uh, D on, on the executive session?
I'm sorry?
D on executive session?
There's no, there's no action to take right now. They said, no.
On D?
Uh-uh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm talking about the other one then.
Yeah, we're talking about the consent item seven and eight, D seven and eight.
No, I'm talking about the one for the health district.
That's, um, that's, that's a different, that's three E two. Now we're back on the regular agenda, so I went to the beginning. The consent is first.
What happened with the consent? I'm sorry.
We haven't made the motion yet. Here's, it's the ones you pulled for D seven and eight.
B D, under A, under B, D, seven and eight. Uh, go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion to approve consent item, agenda D, seven and eight. D, seven and eight. We took those back into executive. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And item three E two, um, that is on the health unit, the health.
I have to make a motion on that just to reject all bids and go out for bids, uh, again, uh, for at least one week.
I will second that motion as well. We have a motion and a second. I will second that motion as well. We have a motion and a second to reject all bids and go out for, um, bids again. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Um, are there any other items that we failed to address?
The only executive item with any action was A, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, um, do we have any adjournments in memory?
I do, Judge.
Yes, if you want to go ahead.
Judge, I have Jacqueline Anne Klein. They regretfully announced the passing of Jacqueline Anne Klein on February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four in Corpus Christi. She grew up in Corpus Christi and attended Incarnate Word Academy, also made her home in New York City, where she graduated from Columbia and lived for many years in Princeton, New Jersey, where she attended Princeton University, in Los Angeles, where she had several acting roles in movies, and she lived briefly in Chicago. Jacqueline will always be remembered for her kindness and compassion, especially with regard to her devotion to animals, and for her contributions to the establishment of Madison's Clinic, Harley and Harlow's Special Place, and Lucky Lodge at Pee-wee's Pet Adoption and World Sanctuary in Corpus Christi. Jacqueline was also admired for her elegant and bold sense of fashion, a flair which she exhibited from an early age, and which, and which clients whom she later styled were lucky enough to benefit from. Her remarkable talent extended to interior decoration projects, such as some of the buildings at Pee-wee's. Her cousin Lynn fondly remembered the style shows which she and Jacqueline used to stage at their home, their grandparents Irene and Sal Grossman, where Jacqueline could do more with a scarf than seeming, seemed humanly possible. She was the best companion with whom to travel and to explore new places around the world. She loved to dance, always being the best on the floor. Jacqueline had a, a verve, passion, and enthusiasm that was born out in everything she did, qualities whose promise had been yet to be fully realized. Jacqueline Klein will be lovingly remembered and honored by those who have survived her, her parents, Annette and Melvin Klein, her sister Jenna Klein, her niece Catalina, her nephew's Kayden, Linda Moreno, and Al Paramin, her loyal confidants Harley and Harlow, her cherished dogs, and her extended family of aunts, uncles, cousins, and friends. She will be deeply missed. Uh, my condolences to the Klein family on the loss of Jacqueline Klein.
Yes, our sincere condolences. Are there any others? If not, I have one. The brother-in-law to, um, Teresa McLemore and her husband Tim, Jackie G. Potter, April sixteenth, nineteen thirty-two, through February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Sergeant First Class Jackie Gay Potter, ninety-one, passed away on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at his home in Lone Jack, Missouri, with his loving wife Sonia Potter by his side. Born in Brookfield, Missouri, to Clara Williams and John Potter. Jackie attended high school at Dalton Vocational School and University of Missouri Training in Electronics. He joined the U.S. Army, was stationed in Okinawa, Tokyo, and served in the Korean War. After Jackie was honorably discharged in nineteen fifty-six, he worked for the Chi, Chicago Burlington and Quincy Railroad in Nebraska, the Missouri Army National Guard Military Academy, and finally Ford Motor Company until his retirement. Jackie Potter was a lifetime member of the VFW Post Ten Forty-eight and the Widow's Sons Lodge Number Seventeen. He loved fishing, hunting, working around the farm, cars, and he loved his dogs. We will truly miss his wisdom, strong will, determination, leadership, and smile. A celebration of life with military honors was held Saturday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at Swan Lake Memorial Park, Grain Valley, Missouri. We're very sorry for your family's loss. Yes.
condolences and prayers.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Are there any others? Then I will accept a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, and I will second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And it is three twenty-eight, and we are closed.